And I'm going to ask, I heard a comment about people in Q who might be in the public to be let in. So is, can that happen?
Mahendra, you need to change your name to, from panelist to your name.
Oh, I see, okay.
All right, I don't see anyone else joining us, so that's fine, but.
There are, there are five attendees.
Okay, very good. Um, all right, so I'm going to ask Ms. Friends to call the roll, but I don't think we've done this virtually for a while. So I'm just going to make some quick introductions. And um, so I'm Glenn Clark, I'm the chairman of the board. And I welcome everyone to this beautiful summer evening. Beautiful to be in Michigan. And I'd like to introduce Vice Chairman Bosinbrook, who, if you could just wave, Michael. That's our vice chairman. And um, all the rest of the board members are on here, but we also have supporting actors on the stage, if you will, that support the board. So Ms. Friends, if you could wave, that's, um, she is administrator here at the city of Troy. And she serves in a supporting capacity here. Also, Mr. Evans is with us, uh, somewhere on my screen, there he is. And he um, works for the city of Troy. He is also administrator and he will be supporting the, the board with lots of good information. And then we also have Mr. Motsney, who is an assistant city attorney for the city of Troy. And he will be serving as our legal advisor here. And everyone else who is watching can see the rest of the board members that are present and listed with their, with their names. I'm not going to bother uh, to go through all those names and take time. So Ms. Friends, I believe, were prepared for a roll call.
Mr. Clark?
I am here.
Mr. Green?
Here.
Mr. Desmond?
Here.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
Here.
Mr. McCauley?
Here.
Mr. Ramon?
Here.
Mr. Bosinbrook?
Here.
Mr. Kenkri?
Here.
Okay, we have one, so we will be, we'll proceed. We have a resolution to allow participation in public meetings by electronic means. This is one of those means. And I'm going to just um, leave calling, um, Mr. Evans to address this issue before us.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And pursuant to some action that city council took, in order to continue with this uh, electronic means, we had to modify our previous resolution that we passed, I believe, a few months ago. So it would be appropriate for the board to uh, read this and then uh, presuming everybody's okay with it, adopt it, so we can proceed tonight.
Very good. Are there any questions for Mr. Evans, a member of the board? If not, um, would somebody like to take action on that resolution? Mr. Green, uh, I'm sorry, Mr. McCauley.
I make the motion that we approve the new standards for electronic meetings put forth by the city of Troy and its council.
Thank you. Sir, a second. Mr. Desmond, seconds. Is there a discussion on that resolution? See none, Ms. Friends, well, oh, Mr. Motsney.
I would recommend approving the resolution as printed in the agenda packet, just to make sure we cover all bases.
Sure, is that, is that part of your motion, Mr. McCauley and Mr. Desmond?
Per, per the agenda packet, yes.
Very good, that's part of their motion.
I wasn't clear when I said that, sorry.
That's okay. Any further discussion? See, none, Ms. Friends, were prepared for votes.
Mr. Bosinbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Desmond?
You're muted.
Mr. Desmond?
Yes.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Mr. McCauley?
Yes.
Mr. Ramon?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes. Motion passes. Will proceed. Mr. Desmond obviously puts mute on his computer because he doesn't want the waves lapping up from the water to disturb him.
So I'm trying to keep the noise low, that's why.
That's wonderful. Okay, so I'm going to call on Vice Chairman Bosinbrook now to read our rules and procedures for those who are before us for the first time to better understand how we will proceed uh, tonight during these proceedings. Mr. Vice Chairman Bosinbrook?
Thank you. Um, so this will be the zoning board of appeals opening statement and procedure as printed in the agenda packet. Uh, the zoning board of appeals is a group of seven of your neighbors appointed by city council to decide on requests for variances and other matters that are brought before them. variance is a relaxation of the literal provisions of the zoning ordinance. Petitioners must indicate a hardship or practical difficulty with the land that would warrant the granting of the variance. The board will hear the items in the order that they appear on the agenda. When an item is called, the chairman will verify that the petitioner is present. Then the city administration will summarize the facts of the case. The petitioner will then be given an opportunity to address the board to explain the justification for the action requested. After the petitioner makes their presentation and answers any questions that the board may have, the chairman will open the public hearing. At the conclusion of the public comments, the chairman will close the public hearing. Once the public hearing is closed, no other public comment will be taken unless in response to a specific question by a member of the board. The board will then make a motion to approve, deny, or postpone the request. In order for the request to pass, a minimum of four votes are needed. If the request is not granted, the applicant has the right to appeal the board's decision to Oakland County Circuit Court.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Bosinbrook, and we will proceed with the approval of the minutes for April twentieth, two thousand one. I'd just like to say to, uh, just to summarize what the vice chairman just said, uh, if you're visiting with us tonight and you have something to say, you know, just make sure that if um, it'll be quite clear if you're able to at that point in time. I'll call for any input, comments, so forth. But they have to be done through me with my recognition, and then you'll have the floor. Uh, and then you won't be able to speak when somebody else is speaking. You certainly won't be able to speak unless you're recognized by the chairman. And so that's a good, quick summary. Uh, number three is approval of minutes regarding April twenty-one. Would somebody like to be recognized? As a member of the board? Wait, um, Mr. Eisenbacher, I almost called you vice chairman.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to move the resolution to approve the minutes as presented.
It's been moved for approval. Is there a second? Mr. Green, second. Any discussion? Very none, Ms. Friends, were prepared for votes.
Mr. Desmond?
Yes.
Mr. Bosinbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Mr. McCauley?
Yes.
Mr. Ramon?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, and we're going to move on to item four. We're, we're going to have one change to the agenda, which uh, I'm going to call on Mr. Evans here in a second. But what I would like to do is um, add this on after Mr. Motsney's presentation to us. So instead of item eight being public comment, it would be this addition. Um, and then we'll have an additional item, which is nine, which is public comment. So Mr. Evans.
Yes, and then what we need to add would be, uh, per our uh, rules of procedure, May is the month that the board is required to elect a chair and vice chair. So that's why we're adding it to May's agenda.
So that will be, if uh, there isn't an issue by a member of the board, that will be the new item number eight. And then item number nine will be public comment, just to be clear. We'll do that at the very end. All right, that is, the agenda is set. And we move on to item number five A, which is a variance request related to one one six Evelyn line. And I'm going to call on Mr. Evans to present to us, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've got a presentation to show everybody. This is a variance request for one sixteen Evelyn. And the request is to allow an accessory building to be set back five feet from the rear property line, where the zoning ordinance requires the building be six feet from the rear property line. The building already has been, has been constructed. Now, this is a residential property in a neighborhood north of Waddles and east of Livernoy. On the overhead, it's outlined in red. And I'll continue to zoom in on the property for more clarity. Now, this yellow overlay you see represents single-family zoning. As you can see, just about every property in this view is zoned, single-family zoning, just like the subject property. And that's a close-up of the property. I'm, I'm sorry to, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Is that Mr. Green?
Green. Uh, sorry, Mr. Evans, um, I think you're trying to show, and maybe I'm wrong, but I'm only seeing the variance request paragraph.
Mr. Evans, can you, uh?
Name there.
All right, let me check on that. Is that better?
There we go.
All right, I'll, I'll go back.
Thank you.
So as I was saying, the uh, subject neighborhood is located north of Waddles and east of Livernoy. It's outlined in red on the overhead. And I'll continue to zoom in on the neighborhood. And everything you see in yellow in this view is zoned, single-family residential, as is the subject property. And here's a further close-up of the property. Now, the building involved is this, this building down here at the south corner of the property. And they did receive a building permit for it, and I want to say about two thousand thirteen. For a host of reasons, there was never a final inspection. And to be quite honest, uh, a significant amount of time, years went by before the city discovered that uh, this never had a final inspection. We went to follow up. The inspector recognized that the building was actually built too close to the south property line. So in this view here, they indicated it's about, it's about five and, five and a half feet away from what they indicate. Um, our inspector believes it's also about that. So the ordinance does require that it be six feet away. If the variance is granted, the city will work with the applicant to get this completely finaled out in regards to the construction activity. So I'll turn it back over to the board for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Is there a member of the board? Like to ask employer of staff? Very none, we will call on, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Green, and then Mr. Desmond. Mr. Green?
I, I think it should be fairly brief, but I don't see any slick sort of straight-on pictures. And so I'm not sure if there are any fences or anything near there. Are there any, other than, than requesting the city to mark that six? But is there anything clear to indicate where the property line is for the homeowner? We don't have, what we have is what was provided in the application. I'm not aware that any as-built survey, for example, was taken. But perhaps the applicant has a different answer. That, thanks.
Good to that, yes. Thank you, Mr. Green. We'll get to the applicant in just a second. Mr. Desmond?
Just for my clarity, was this, so this was approved, permitted, and the permit was approved. Then they built it, and then from there is when it just fell through the cracks, correct?
Right.
Okay, so they did do what they were supposed to do, but then it just never, they never called for a final or a final, never happened, there was no, any info on that?
It appears in two thousand thirteen and fourteen, there might have been one or two calls for finals, according to the building inspectors' notes. Uh, one building inspector noticed on one of those inspections that there was electrical, that there was no permit for. Another inspector, uh, I think in two thousand fourteen, wasn't able to get into the house, and then it kind of fell off the radar.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Mr. McCauley?
I think, Mr. Desmond, um, also, from my understanding, is the permit was put in and when it wasn't inspected, that's afterwards when they found that the setbacks weren't correct on it. Though everything was done, even, they even changed the size of the dimensions of the, of the, of the shed after the original application. So that's getting to final inspection, and it's never been done.
Okay, so they didn't conform to what the original permit requested in the first place, so?
Right, and there's one page of the uh, application that shows the letter that the city sent. And that was one of the deficiencies that they noted, actually two of them, the setbacks. And then some structural portions were, you know, basically the building wasn't large, different than what the plan said.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Our Vice Chairman Bosinbrook?
I just wanted to have a, a quick procedural question for Mr. Evans. Did the, the building permit, did it um, does it give them the, the right to put it? And sort of where it needs to be? Or is that where this final inspection comes in, that it's in the appropriate location, proper setbacks?
Mr. Bosinbrook, the first part of your question uh, broke up a little bit. Could you repeat it?
I apologize. I, if, if you could still hear me. My question was, when the building, does the building permit dictate where it is supposed to be built on the property?
Yes, the building permit will show it in the corner of the property. Uh, as it exists now.
With the appropriate setbacks?
Correct.
Thank you.
Got one, one question following that up. Is that the permit lets them build anywhere that would be conforming, and they just happen to go outside a conforming envelope? So is that why this is required? Had they moved it afoot in the other direction, it wouldn't matter, right? It's just because it's too close, it's, it's, the setback isn't being met?
You're muted, call.
Oh, if I could show you the permit, I don't have it, I didn't bring it. But it'll show that the building is supposed to be in the southwest corner of the property. Uh, it shows that it's supposed to be six feet away from the south and east property line, or west property line. And it looks like what happened is it was sighted improperly, and somebody built it too close to the south.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other member of the board? We're going to move on to the petitioner or his or her representative? Is there somebody here representing this petitioner? Mr. Norris?
Yes, uh, good evening.
Hello, good evening.
Uh, nice to see everyone.
Who are you, sir?
I am an attorney.
Okay.
And my P number is three six eight oh six.
I don't need that.
Okay.
And who do you represent, please, for the record?
The petitioner, Joseph and Ivana Olshewski.
Please proceed. What would you like to share with us? Hearing in mind, we have your packet, all, all the pieces of the puzzle. So if you can briefly just overview what you're trying to share.
I'll be brief. Uh, clarification, according to my checking of the uh, the city's website, there was both a building electrical permit pulled for the accessory structure. The electrical was filed and approved. The building permit for the accessory was not filed nor approved. And then uh, just another little housekeeping. For Mr. Green, I, I submitted a couple of photos of the property yesterday, uh, which shows the structure is uh, one foot from, you know, being, it's five feet, it's not six feet. And uh, the rear lot line is a four-foot chain link fence with overgrown brush adjacent to it, so. So uh, the uh, standards of the uh, variance, and I'll just, I'll just amplify the statement of practical difficulty that uh, uh, Mr. Olshewski signed and has submitted yesterday. Uh, the exceptional characteristics, these folks own ninety-four Evelyn, which is the property immediately next door. Uh, this problem came up when a deer got caught in their soccer net and started to die, and the city carted it away. And the, and the inspector happened to notice that uh, the soccer nets are too high. Mr. Olshewski took them out. The porch, too high, and ninety-four Evelyn, he took that down. Uh, but he can't do uh, anything with this uh, accessory structure that's sitting on concrete without a variance, so. Uh, that's kind of the exceptional circumstances. Characteristics related to the property, as I said, it's, it's near a four-foot chain link fence with overgrown brush. I don't think it's bothering anybody, but it certainly doesn't constitute any public uh, safety concern or any property value diminution uh, back there. The property is uh, this is not personal property, it's real estate. And so that's the, the third characteristics of the uh, variance requirement contained in the, in the uh, zoning ordinance. And I think the biggest concern the board may have is, is this a self-created problem by Mr. Olshewski? The answer is yes. Uh, he made the property, made the accessory structure eleven. Instead of eleven by seventeen, he made it twenty-five by fourteen. Expanded in both directions, yet he's still well under the four hundred and fifty square foot requirement of the zoning, zoning ordinance. And this has gone on for six and a half years. I don't know why it wasn't inspected. I don't know why it wasn't filed. Uh, Mr. Olshewski seems to recall, but I can't, I can't assert that he had footings uh, inspected because there's no, there's no written record of that. But there are practical difficulties to removing this. That is, uh, it would cost a lot of money to remove or demolish a structure of this size and uh, move it further back. And so we're asking that the uh, practical difficulty section be considered, where we've got the, this nice uh, family with their four young children, spiriting, uh, living within the spirit of the zoning ordinance. The safety is still protected, uh, and there's no, no threat to the public. And the last standard under the zoning variance ordinance is whether this is harmful to property values or creates a safety risk. These are high-end materials, the, as you may see from the Google Earth, the roof of the structure matches the roof of the house. It's a nice-looking stone, high-end uh, materials. Uh, so it certainly doesn't diminish the property values in the neighborhood. And uh, we are willing to live with the uh, minimum necessary requirements of the board, recognizing that there may be reasonable condition, uh, conditions that the board may put on Mr. Olshewski, such as getting uh, a final inspection of the shed for the building permit and paying any uh, fees and late fees. Does anyone have any questions, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Norris. Mr. Uh, is there a member of the board would like to be recognized? Who'd like to inquire of the petitioner's representative? Mr. Eisenbacher?
Unmute myself. Um, is this built, was this building expanded at any point? Or is it in the as-built condition? It's in as-built, okay. And was it a prefabricated kit, or was it custom-built for this?
No, Mr. Olshewski is a, a residential builder himself. Uh, he built it himself, not, not a kid.
All right, another member of the board? All right, we will call on um, our wonderful Ms. Friends to address uh, any public comment on this matter.
Um, so I will bring to your attention again that we did send um, public comment that Mr. Norris had sent to us. That was emailed to each board member. And if, uh, I just need one more second to make sure nothing new came in, so one moment. Okay, there is one email that I will read that was submitted. "To whom it may concern, please be advised, we have no problem with the owners at one one six Evelyn Drive, receiving a variance for their building, which is less than six feet from the property line. We think it should be granted. Gary and Sheri Lynn, K O P K A U, of one twenty-nine Evelyn Drive, were eight zero eight five." And one moment. Okay, that would be all the public comment. But I believe at this point, we would want to inquire if the attendees present, um, if anyone is here for the public comment section, they would need to raise their hand.
Okay, so that's been added in for our previous conversations?
This is something new, because we use Zoom.
Very good, okay.
Okay. So if the attendees present are listening to the meeting, if you could please raise your hand, and then I can um, get allowed to talk.
Very good. So um, I am the chairman, so I will uh, open public com, public, the public hearing. And um, as we used to do in the old-fashioned days before COVID. And so it's open now. Is there anyone who would like to be recognized to comment on this, this issue, specifically this issue? Before the board? Second call for public comment on this matter. Seeing that there isn't, we will close that portion out. Thank you, Ms. Friends. And so I bring it back to the board and for possible action, for any inquiries of uh, the uh, petitioner's representative or city staffs. Mr. McCauley?
Just to clarify with Mr. Evans, Mr. Evans, um, if we make a decision to approve uh, this variance, then the um, homeowner will still be subject to getting an approved um, final approval for his um, building permit as far, as far as that's concerned, correct?
Right.
So he'll be held to the standards of everything else, other than the setback, which is what they're here for a variance for.
Right, they'll work with them, uh.
Because they did note that the building is larger, so it'll work in making sure all that the plans are reviewed and the proper inspections are performed to make sure everything's compliant.
So our concern is just the setback and not? So our concern is just the setback and nothing else?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Green.
With that in mind, as much as, uh, I don't, I don't love that, that this man who is a builder made these, these decisions, uh, knowing that, you know, a change of that magnitude would need to be reviewed by the city, et cetera. But it's outside of our purview, our purview as, as clarified is that variance, it's six inches, it's been there for six years. Uh, I, that in and of itself does not seem harmful to me. A- a- at this point, the, the property isn't necessarily exceptional in, in that regard, except for this new structure. And so it is directly related to the premises for which the variance is sought, not some other location. Uh, I, I know I'm sort of jumping, but like, I, I don't, I don't see a reason that is compelling not to grant this, uh, th- the, the characteristics are, it was built by the man, so they, they are of a personal nature, but, um, I, i- i- it's not gonna hurt anything as has been noted for to remain as is, and his neighbors are clearly uh, okay with things as they stand, so keeping that in mind, I would like to, uh, move to approve the variance request, that is the sum of my motion.
I'll second.
There was a second, I'm sorry, was that?
Desmond seconds.
Yeah, Desmond seconds, and then we open it for discussion for just the members of the board, uh, Mr. Green, um, you said six inches, did you mean twelve inches?
No, I meant six, um, according to the document.
Maybe I'm missing something here, because I'm looking at the five feet versus six feet, so I just want to make sure I'm
Maybe, maybe I'm misreading a piece of it, uh, I would still.
Up to.
Mr. Desmond, I know that, so I was just letting Mr. Green finish.
I, I would, I would, I'll, I'll be very brief because I think Mr. Evans has clarification, but I, I would, uh, I would still move this at twelve inches. Um, uh, of variance, but there is a, a note in at least one place that indicates that it is five foot six and it has been, it looks like it's been rounded down for the purposes of, uh, I'd rather round it up for the purposes of, uh, the variance.
Thank you, Mr. Evans.
Yeah, Mr. Green, uh, you are correct, uh, uh, some parts of the, uh, site plan were a little illegible, but he did clarify in his narrative that it was five feet, six inches, it looked like our inspector thought it was five feet, so just to be safe, I'd err on the safe side. Uh, at the end of the day, the shed is where it is and it's, it's not gonna move regardless, uh, you know, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eisenbacher.
Believe the difference is on the print, if you look at the, or the sketch, if you measure from the wall, it was five feet, six inches, if you measure from the roof where it overhangs, it was five feet.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Desmond, did I see that you wanted to be recognized, I'm sorry, maybe not.
No.
Okay, thank you, anyone else? Mr. Vice Chairman Bosnbrook.
Yeah, just to be, just to be quick, um, because I don't think the petitioner has satisfied, subsection A, there's nothing exceptional about the property in this, in this request. He's, subsection D is acknowledged that he, uh, is the cause of the error. This is of personal nature and, uh, is, is, um, not related to the premises. Well, it is related to this premises, but more to the, uh, there's no exceptional characteristic. I don't think the burden has been met, I understand it's six inches, but I don't think the burden has been met, I think we're constrained by what uh, requirements are under the ordinance, and so I don't support the motion, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Bosnbrook, another member. Well, I'll just say, real quick, I'll, I'll just say, this is a tough one. And, um, I thought it was gonna be an easy one because I looked at the address and I saw, it popped out at me, one sixteen, that's my birthday, so I said, oh, this is gonna be easy peasy, we're gonna sail right through. But, um, yeah, this is, this is a tough one, and, you know, it's also, we're operating this era where it's difficult for the public to share their thoughts with us, which is not comfortable for me. Um, I know the open meetings situation has been changed, amended and so forth, it's essentially trying to do things that, you know, really don't work with, uh, an open government in a sunshine effect from, uh, the laws of the sixties to bring sunshine into government, so I don't, I don't care for that, and we are, um, quasi-judicial body, but we are citizens of the city, representing the citizens, not the city government. And so this is tough for me, and I think in previous meetings before COVID, we had people in the neighborhood here in front of us, we could almost talk and inquire of them, like, well, you know, what would work for you if you'd, to satisfy you, I remember one, at least one time, we did that, uh, regarding a church, and there was a small variance request, and we agreed, or we required that the petitioner, um, fa- uh, plant evergreen or s- similar type of, um, uh, plant life along the property line, and that satisfied, the neighbors satisfied the petitioner, boom, we approved it. But this is so close, you can't plant evergreen trees to hide it, and of course, I wouldn't ever suggest that because the structure's integrity could be in jeopardy with roots and so forth, so this is really tough for me, I, I'm not really sure how I feel. Um, I feel like it needs, uh, clearly needs to be resolved, and it's been way too long. And to Vice Chairman Bosnbrook's point, I, I agree, you know, there's, under normal circumstances, there's not a lot you can point to that, you know, um, would, um, justify a variance, but it is there, it has been there, and, um, I don't know, I feel, in my gut, it's, you know, concept of having it eradicated or torn down, and, you know, the foundation having to be reset is not only a train wreck environmentally, but it's also a train wreck for the neighbors that have to go through all that, and so that's, those are my general thoughts. I'm hoping to my board colleagues for someone to sway my vote, so, Mr. Green.
Uh, I'm not gonna sway, uh, and I just want to be clear, uh, in review, I, I generally agree with Mr. Bosnbrook, uh, he has stated, uh, a fact, A through D, possibly not B, um, uh, this clearly does not meet those uh, practical, uh, difficulties, the five standards, sorry, I think I dropped out, um, but i- it does meet E, we have very clear evidence that it's not going to bother any of the neighbors. From a precedent perspective, y- uh, which we don't, it does not technically set. Uh, there is certainly a question of, so are we saying we're encouraging people to hide changes for, for a few years until, you know, the city doesn't care anymore, um, or, or the ZBAs suppose? Uh, no, because I don't think that was the intent here, I think this just never, never got looked at for whatever reason. Um, and so while it only clearly meets, this is only clearly related to uh, the fifth standard, that is a standard, and that is the requirement. And so because this does not relate to the rest of the issues with that structure, um, I think of all the things, I think this was and this is speculation, I suspect this was not an intentional violation despite his bona fides. Um, and so I'll continue to support it w- with the caveat that, or with the writer that I don't love it, but I think that this is a good use of, of a variance.
Very good, uh, Mr. Eisenbacher.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, my, um, one thing also is looking at the essential character of the neighborhood, when you look at the overhead, um, it appears the property at one-thirty-seven behind it has a shed also that is, um, most likely grandfathered because it appears to be directly on the property line. Just in terms of character of the neighborhood, um, also, we received six letters from neighbors, um, that are in support, several of them were from across the street where I don't believe they have much visibility of it, but it is both sides and one of the rear neighbors did approve. I would like to make, uh, an amendment to the resolution in line with, uh, something we've done in the past as a board, which is if the resolution passes, he has a, a one-foot variance for the entire back of his property. I'd like to make an amendment so that this variance only applies to the existing structure as built and as placed currently, and not for any expansion of the variance or future use within that, within that setback.
Second.
Very good, there's a motion, there's an amendment. Mr. Eisenbacher, Mr. Green seconds, is there discussion on the, so essentially the amendment now to the board becomes the main motion, so we deal with that first, we're gonna work our way down, uh, unless there's another amendment. Um, and I'll ask for a discussion, but before we do that, I'm gonna call Mr. Evans. Mr. Eisenbacher mentioned that from the aerial, um, photo, the other structure, which is apparently a shed, um, is right on the property line of a, a close-by neighbor, could you pull that up, Mr. Evans, is that possible?
One thirty-seven.
The house on Liberty.
Everybody see it now?
Yes.
Okay, I know.
He mentioned one-fifty.
Yep.
Evelyn.
Can you pull that in, Mr. Evans?
Sure. One thirty-seven.
One-fifty Evelyn, I, I, uh, I'd say, uh, one thirty-seven back here.
Yep. This is one of the older neighborhoods in Troy.
Looks like, um, fifty-six is kind of in similar categories, one sixteen, it's kind of hard to tell with the red box. I don't know, Mr. Evans, if you can withdraw the red box around one sixteen, just to show us everything else.
Now let me see if I have another, uh, even another slide, see if I might like to. Uh, we don't, okay, see if I can do that here. No, I can't, I'm sorry.
Okay, I mean, it looks similar, but maybe one sixteen's a little closer, I'm not sure. Splitting hairs, I guess, but when you're dealing with one foot or less, I guess that is splitting hairs, right? So, okay, uh, to my, uh, colleagues, is there someone who would like to be recognized for discussion on the motion, which is the amendment?
I, I support the idea, that was, uh, my, my intention by, uh, seconding the original motion, which I didn't, my fault, I didn't consider that resolution component, but yes.
Sure.
I, I, I intended for this to just apply to this structure, not that he would, you know, have a blanket variance.
Thank you, Mr. Desmond, Mr. Evans.
Yes, and, um, anytime a variance is granted, uh, so for example, in this, uh, in this instance, if the variance was granted, it would be for what the application showed, so we would administer it, we consistently administered it as not being a variance for the whole, you know, anything in the back of the property, just the components of this, so, um, well, certainly you can proceed with the amendment, I, uh, we would, you would be covered even if you didn't do the amendment.
And, and Mr. Evans, I think Mr. McCullough already brought this up, but this does still mean he has to get structural approval and the final building permit has to be issued and that's still, or not permit, but the final inspection still has to be approved and all that.
Right, right.
All right, just checking, thank you.
Is there another member of the board, so I'll just say, under discussion, kind of sounds like, it might be a little bit redundant, but I, I don't see there's any harm, so even if you don't want the the, the pres- or the variance, uh, approved, you could still vote for this as a yes, and then have an opportunity to reject the whole package when we go to the next vote, which is the, uh, main motion, which is, is the very petitioner's request. Um, or you could just say, well, this is redundant, I'm, I'm just gonna vote no, it's really up to you. Um, I think I'm gonna vote yes on Mr. Eisenbacher's motion, and then we'll get to the main, the main act, uh, subsequent to that. Anyone else who would like to be recognized?
I'd like to say yes.
Mr. Ramon.
I'd like to say yes to Mr. Eisenbacher's, uh, modification.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Ramon. Anyone else? Vice Chairman Bosnbrook.
I don't want to belabor the point, um, so I'll be very, very brief, I just point out that, um, just to respond to one of the other board members' comments about which elements are satisfied and which are not. Um, one of the, the slides, um, that will be presented, I think, towards the end of our meeting does talk about the, the standards for dimensional variance, and it does indicate that or it should determine that substantially, that the applicant substantially satisfies all of the, the char- all of the elements. And just to the point that I don't think all the, the elements are, uh, substantially satisfied here, that's my, that's my basis. Uh, I appreciate everyone else's comments, and I recognize it's a close case, so, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Bosnbrook, another member of the board. Seeing that there isn't anyone else, I'm, Ms. Friends, we're prepared for a vote toward the board members. A yes vote is for the amendment to incorporate the, the language that Mr. Eisenbacher said to clarify for potentially any other action, does not mean you support the variance, it means you're agreeing to that language to be, um, added. And then we move, uh, on a ye- uh, yes or no, we end up moving on it, regardless, yes or no, we move on to, um, the main motion, which is the variance request, so, Ms. Friends, we're prepared for a vote.
Mr. McCollie?
Yes.
Mr. Ramon?
Yes.
Mr. Clerk?
Yes.
Mr. Bosnbrook?
No.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Desmond?
Yes.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Motion carries, so we now move on to the main motion, which I'm gonna open it up for discussion again amongst the board, Mr. McCollie.
Um, I, I, I am with, um, Mr. Bosnbrook on this, in the sense that we, there's no, there's, there's no merit for this, other than the fact that it's been there. And we should be looking at this as if the fact that, that it hasn't been built yet, not that it's already there. So that shouldn't have been a factor in this, um, my concern is that, and with setting precedents for future ones um, coming in, go, well, you let this guy do this, you know, as a foot. Well, I remember we had a case a few years ago, a gentleman built his garage too close to the property line, and we said, no, you had to take your garage down, and he had to remove his garage. Uh, but the difference is, and this is where, so I really support Mr. Bosnbrook in that respect, and, and that I don't want to do that. But here's where I think the difference is, in my mind, and I'll be quick with it. The property at ninety-four, he owns it. He's not gonna own it in the future, if I was him to, to help comply, I would, I would get it surveyed, take one foot off of ninety-four and put it onto his lot on one sixteen, and it's done. It's legally taken care of, and he has nothing else to do with it, then he'll have, he won't have to be dealing with this. Secondly, all the other neighbors approve of it, that's good, and now it comes down to common sense. That is this really a, a structure that is hindrance to the neighborhood, the look of the neighborhood? Are the neighbors against it, uh, is this neighbor ha- does he have a history of, of repeated things that have irritated his neighbors, violations and doing things in an unsavory way that is, that Violations and doing things in an unsavory way that, that they don't want to give him anything? I don't think so. So. In my mind. Common sense says. Give it to him. I'm not happy about it. And, and I'll be honest with you, I don't want to see this come in front of me again from this builder. Because if it does, I'm not gonna be happy because never seen repeated. Offenses to this. And that he, you know, even though his neighbors are happy with it right now. I'm not. So. That's where I stand with it.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. McCauley. Mr. Desmond, and I have a question for Mr. Botz- Motzni. Go ahead, Mr. Desmond.
I'll be brief here. I just wanted to also say that I do understand Mr. Bosenbrook's position, and I, I do see. I, I agree with, with a lot of what he said. The one thing that I do notice is that. They did expand the structure. And had they expanded the structure and the expansion of the structure pushed into a setback that had not initially been. Debated, then I, I might have a different position, but since he. Didn't encroach, but since he pushed further into his own property, and he, we're talking about six inches, that's. Kind of within an accidental tolerance almost for the, the deployment of the footings. If, if, if he was adding substantially more space and he had pushed all the way to the property line, it would have been different. But it, it, it just seems like for such a relatively small amount that it just does not. It seemed like it's, it, it seems like it should be allowed to. Get the, the variance from my perspective, but I do understand the position against as well, so I, I do appreciate that from my fellow board members. So I just wanted to say that.
Thank you, Mr. Desmond. Mr. Motzni, I have a question, really to Vice Chairman Bosenbrook's point. About practical difficulties. It seems if I. Am recalling correctly, we had a conversation. I think it was a one-on-one conversation you and I had. About the practical difficulties and the standard, and I'm looking at them right now. And. So can you just address real quickly? The standard about having all of them. Having to be met for the board. As a guidance for the board to approve a variance request.
Yes, Mr. Chair. The. Ordinance is clear. That in order to establish practical difficulties under our ordinance. All, all of the standards have to be met. That's where, that's the directive of our ordinance.
Okay, thank you. And. I think it was Ms., Vice Chairman Bosenbrook, can I just call on you? I think you're the one who brought up item E. For the fifth. Practical difficulty issue. Is that correct? Did you bring that up? Or somebody did?
I, no, that wasn't me. That was.
Okay, Mr. Green, was that you? Cause I'm reading item, thank you, Vice Chairman Bosenbrook. I'm looking at item E. And I don't see that there, there's an issue here. Maybe, Mr. Green, you said there wasn't an issue. Was, was that it? Okay.
Yeah, I was, I was saying that I believe that A through D. Almost certainly aren't satisfied, but the E at least is.
Okay, I understand. I just wanted to clarify. Okay, is there another member of the board, Mr. Ramon?
On a normal case, I think this property, this, this structure was built when, in two thousand thirteen? Right, uh. Okay, so. In normal circumstance, the, the inspection would, would have been done before the completion of the building, right? Mr.?
Yeah, it would have been their responsibility to call for inspections, and it's possible they. It, it, it doesn't always say who requested the inspections. But there were inspections performed. On the building.
On a, on a regular case, this could have been caught earlier, right? Before the construction, all this final touch, touch-up is done, right? Is that, is that something that is, because CD did not come, or what, whose fault is that? The inspection wasn't done on time?
Well, boy, to answer your question, I mean, it's, we, we ultimately advise all permit holders that it's incumbent upon them. To do exactly what they've been approved to do and perform the work in accordance with code. So. Ultimately, whether or not the city, in my opinion, ultimately whether or not the city verifies. That it's been met or not. That when the permit is issued, they sign that they have the responsibility to do everything to code. So despite the fact that an inspector might have not caught something at the time.
There is a provision of inspection, right? That's, there'll be a city individual would go to the place, measure it, and see if it's, everything is done. And then put a green, green light on it and, or green tag on it, and then. The next step would continue, right? But then that, that hasn't happened for, that didn't happen for this case.
Uh, it doesn't appear that that happened until recently.
Right. So, and then all this thing is done, and it's nice and clean, and then to. Mr. Clark's point, you know, this is gonna be a huge demolition and then the noy- noy- nuisance issue for the neighborhood. And it's only six inches, so I, I think this is a special case. You know, seven years, eight years down the road, so I would say, you know, I think we can still approve this. On a normal case, I would. Support Mr. Bosenbrook's point, and I agree with that, but. It's a little bit different case in this case. For this, you know, applicant's case. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Desmond?
Uh, this is for Mr. Evans. I just had a quick question. I know with. Conventional structures, there's a series of inspections that will occur, including a foundation or footing inspection. Is that also the case for accessory structures, or do they just kind of issue a permit and say, all right? Show us the finished product. Is there a difference between how a regular structure and accessory structure are handled permit-wise with that? You're muted.
I'm muted.
So typically what happens is, Mr. Desmond's correct, they do a footing inspection. And locate that. Now, I'm not the building inspector, and I don't supervise the building inspectors. I haven't looked into it carefully with this case, but. Some inspectors will check the footing depth, the footing width, to make sure that, that. Those minimum loads can support what's gonna be, or construction be, support what's be put on it. It's. I, I can only speculate as to how specific they get when it comes to pulling tape for property lines at that time. Okay, and that, that's for accessory structures too? Theoretically, that should also occur? Yeah, they definitely have to get a, a footing inspection. Okay. For those. Okay, thank you.
Great, Mr. Green.
This is for Mr. Motzni. I, I want to be a hundred percent clear. Because. I would agree with what has been said by a couple of people, and I think I mentioned it myself. Precedent is not something I want to set here. I don't, broadly speaking, I do not like this. I'm still, I'm holding my vote. At, at the moment, I have, I have to consider that clarification you provided. About being the points, but. You said it before, can you please state for the record again? Each of these decisions is independent and individual. This does not set precedent for any future decisions. Is that an accurate statement?
Yes. The. Each case is decided based on the specific facts of that case, and. Just because you do something in one case that's similar to another case, doesn't mean you're bound by that. Because each case can be distinguished, because there's always peculiarities that apply to. Each particular case that might not be present in another case, so. So you do not establish precedent just because another person might request a similar variance sometime in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Mr. Eisenbacher?
If you look at the bottom of page twenty-two in our packet. The petitioner states that the footing inspection was approved. And the electrical inspection was approved as well. And then if you look. At the next page from the city of Troy, page twenty-three. They do clarify in number one. Structure is too close. The wall is five foot, six inches. So basically, the mistake was is when they measured from. The footing to the property line, if, or it was missed. When the, when it was placed. When it was checked by the builder and whoever was the inspector for it. There were multiple people missing that it was placed too close to the property line. So in my opinion, it's not just. The. Property owner's fault for it being too close because multiple checks and balances failed. Thank you.
Thank you. Another member.
Uh, I just wanted to clarify, did you see the, 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 Mr. Eisenbach, the footing inspection indicates that. It was accepted at that point?
The petitioner says the footing inspection was approved.
Okay, so we had one. Cause I mean, there's a lot of methods of construction where the, the footing, even though they place the footing down, doesn't mean that that's necessarily where the, the building envelope goes. So I mean, if he, I don't know what this exact structure looks like, but if he can't delevered it out. You know, six inches, that would still count towards the setback. Am I correct in that? It's not the footing that's indicating the building line, it's the actual construction. The wall of the building, right? Okay, I got a thumbs up.
Alright, yeah, that's the difference between the six inch and one foot.
Okay.
That's also noted on page twenty-three in our packet.
Yeah, I was looking at that. I, I definitely don't like the idea that. I, I'm also a licensed builder, and they do make us go through. A lot of con ed and things like that to eliminate these kind of issues upfront, so. I mean, that, that component is there, that, I mean, this is not a regular. Do-it-yourself HGTV homeowner who decided to put up a shed from a kit in his backyard. I mean, if you're a licensed builder, you should be able to get footings in the ground correctly. But. Yeah, still, it's a tough one, right? Everybody said it already. It's a tough one, but I mean. Yeah. So that's the end of my comments.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Green.
And I would just like to note that I, I do not think I'm mistaken in saying this. That. I had noticed that point on page twenty-two, and that's a good point. But it is my understanding that the roof line of the structure is the determining point, so he still would have needed a six-inch variance. He does need a foot one.
Thank you. Mr. McCauley?
I feel like everybody is just so hesitant on this because. There's no clear path to this. And, and I, and I agree. I think it bothers all of us in regards to this. Because it is such a small amount, but yet. It is, this is something that could have been corrected at the very beginning, but wasn't. And that this doesn't set precedence for other ones. Yeah, I, I got a question. Can we? And I just don't know this, can we abstain on voting on this item?
I'll have Mr. Motzni address that.
No, you could only abstain from voting on a matter if there was a conflict of interest. Otherwise, as a ZPA member, you have a duty to vote on every matter. Coming before the ZPA.
Thank you.
Yes, and I guess in Congress and. The state legislature, they have a present vote, which means that they're just not gonna cast a vote. But they want to be recognized that they were there. We don't have that here, so I was on the county. Board of Commissioners, we didn't have that there either. It was a yes or no. And that, that's that. These are tough issues. I, actually, I can't remember. An issue before this board in, in my memory that. Pretty much I agree with. What everybody has said tonight. Which, you know, I mean, I, it just says that I can see all sides, and they're all very, very well-stated and. Incredibly logical arguments, you know, on all sides, and that's, that's a first for me, so that's, that's very interesting, and I. I think Mr. Ramon kind of summed that up too, so. If there's somebody who would like to be recognized. Let's do that. Otherwise, let's go to a vote. Ms. Friends, we're prepared for a vote. So a yes vote is obviously clear, clearly. Approving the petitioner's requests. With the Eisenbacher amendment, which is really just for clarity, in my, in my opinion. Uh, Ms. Friends?
Mr. Ramon?
You're muted.
You are muted? Okay, very good.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Desmond?
Yes.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Mr. Bosenbrook?
No.
And Mr. McCauley?
No.
Uh, motion carries, and so that item is approved. So, Mr. What is it? Mr. Norris, have a good night. Thank you so much. Okay, we move on to item. Number. Well, I, item five B. Before we get into that, it's already eight-thirty. Does anyone? Would any member like a break? No, okay. So I think what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna call for a break. After we hear. The. Petition, or from Mr. Evans and the petitioner's representative. And before we get into it and public comment, I'm gonna call for a break. So, Mr. Evans, could you please present to us on? Five hundred, related to five hundred West Long Lake Road, please.
Uh, Mrs. Friends was.
Mr. Evans?
Mrs. Friends was trying to get your attention, Mrs., Mr. Clark.
Yes. Mr. Green wanted to be recognized. I'm not sure what you were saying.
To call your attention to Ms. Friends.
Oh, Ms. Friends? Do you have something?
May I ask a question?
Of course.
Could you clarify for me then? At what point, or would you be prompting me? We have public comments for the next case. There's about six emails, two voicemails. And then we do have like some call-ins on the Zoom. Do you want those grouped together?
Yeah, let's do those. Let's just do, do, do those together. We're gonna hear from Mr. Evans, the petitioner's representative then.
Okay.
And then we'll take a break, and then we're gonna come right back to you.
So you'll prompt it, okay.
Because I, I feel like this is gonna take a little time for those two items. And I, I myself need to use the restroom, so. To your point, yes. The answer is yes.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Evans, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next item is a variance request from five hundred West Long Lake. And this is a variance to allow the creation of two new parcels of land. Each of which will have zero frontage along the constructed portion of the right-of-way. The zoning ordinance requires each parcel to have a hundred and ten feet. Of frontage along a constructed portion of the right-of-way.
Well, I think we're just seeing your screensaver.
Very relaxing.
I was gonna say, I like that property. I, I, I want a piece of that property.
So here's an aerial of the neighborhood, and this property is located at the northeast corner of I-75 and Long Lake. It's outlined in yellow. Now, the subject property contains. Several zoning classifications. A good portion of it is zoned IB industrial business, but the yellow portions. Are zoned single-family residential. All the yellow you see adjacent to single-family residential. And we have some attached residential to the east, and across I-75 is a research center zoning. Now, the portion of property involved is at the northern portion, right in this area here. And what they want to do is split two parcels off. Parcel A and Parcel B, and these parcels are adjacent to platted streets. But as shown in the aerial here, the streets are not constructed. And the ordinance does require that. Parcels have to be on a constructed street. They provided some surveys that show they have plenty more than a hundred and ten feet on the unconstructed portions. And these parcels satisfy all of their zoning ordinance requirements. So in order to proceed with their split. They're seeking relief from this board. I'll turn it back over to the board with any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Is, is there a member of the board, Mr. Eisenbacher?
So if you could pull up that zoning map again, Mr. Evans, please. Yep, perfect. So the footprint of the industrial use. Is IB. But the property itself has multiple zonings. Whoops, your sound is mute. So. So did you confirm? You were muted when you.
Oh, yeah, correct. Oh, yeah, correct. The, uh, what you said is the correct statement.
Okay, and it's surrounded on, the industrial portion is surrounded on three sides by residentially zoned properties that are part of that same single lot. Okay, and so there's two streets on the north that, um, I believe we commonly call them paper streets. They're there, but they aren't built. Would both streets need to be constructed for this to not need a variance? Or only the one that is horizontal in the pictures? Stallward, or-
Right, yeah, only stalwart. Cause it looks like they have almost a hundred and eighty feet along stalwart for proposed parcel B. Parcel A. Looks like on proposed parcel A along stalwart, they have a hundred and eighty-one point sixty-four feet.
Okay, and probably also the property to the right of Lot 97, where it's just a paper street, another hundred and eighty feet of street.
Over here?
Yeah, or above that, yeah, all the way across.
Uh, I think that might be actually bordering, uh, a property that, uh, is actually on a paved street. Let's take, yeah, so-
Backs Daniels.
Yeah.
But Daniels, or between those two houses that are existing, there's no street, so it, that's-
Oh, right here.
Yeah.
Yep.
That's where stalwart would go completely through to almost I-75.
Okay.
Extending west.
Yeah, and it is interesting that the city requirement is, is to put streets in before doing the split. Cause commonly, when a development project is approved, the streets are not in until after the project's approved. Which was interesting when I was reading the packet.
We actually talked about that in the department and we thought this was a little different in that when someone comes in and makes the investment to have, you know, multi, multi-houses, um, typically what happens is they'll put the streets in right away, even before, uh, some construction starts. Or at least infrastructure goes in. So this is a little different in that it's, uh, it's just not clear if and when those parcels could be developed.
Okay, but they are restricted to residential with the zoning, right?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Right, another question of our city staff. Not our city staff, but the city staff. Vice Chairman Bosnbrook.
Yeah, just a quick question for Mr. Evans. What would, what would be the, the prompt for the building of the road? Would it be something the city decides to do or plans out, something from the, I mean, I guess what, what would lead to that road being built out?
Well, ultimately, I'm just gonna speculate a little bit, but if somebody were to come in to construct a house on that, uh, one of the requirements that we'd have to determine how we're gonna get there is before you, substantially start building the house, what's the plan for the road? And I guess it would be up to the developer to demonstrate to us that they're gonna have proper, you know, how they're gonna achieve proper access to a paved road as well as utilities, cause utilities would come into that as well. That's not a zoning matter, but utilities would come into it. So, so this instance, I guess I would say a case by case. It would just depend on what the proposal is.
But would, would this be a publicly, would this be a road maintained by the city? It's not a private road?
Yeah, right now, it would be a, a pri, a public street, so they would have to build it to city public street standards and the city would, own the street.
Okay. Mr. Green?
Um, sort of the inverse of that, uh, question from Vice Chair Bosnbrook. If we grant this split, that's all we're granting. We're not granting the right to build houses. We're not granting that the city is going to pay for maintenance of the street or even that they're going to pay for the construction, because that sometimes is offloaded to the developer as part of the agreement. Um, this is purely allowing for a split and then it, the onus is entirely upon the developer to continue that project and, and see it through if the city even allows it.
Right.
Thank you. Another member of the board. All right, it looks like, Mr. Rahman?
No, I'm good.
Your square lit up, so it's kind of reminds me of, uh, Hollywood squares in the old, old days. Um, so we'll go on to the petitioner's representative, then we'll take our quick break. Mr. Thomas.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. My name is Joe Thomas on behalf of the petitioner, five hundred West Long Lake Road. Seems like the board has a good grasp on the request. We're really here, um, as simple, practical, uh, people. The, 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 the thought is that it makes the most sense to develop the road, to develop the infrastructure, the sewer, the underground, the utilities, everything else in connection with a site plan. That the city has an opportunity to obviously review and approve and part of an overall development of this, of this land. It is, you know, there are practical considerations, obviously cost, it's a little burdensome. Um, it's actually very burdensome to build a road. Um, it's kind of, without really knowing what in the final analysis is going to be developed there. Um, we don't know when it's going to be developed. That point was made earlier. Um, but we do want to develop it. We are looking for, or my client is looking for a development partner. Um, so at some point, hopefully, um, within the near future, especially giving, you know, the proliferation of, of residential need these days, um, we'll have a development partner and we'll be able to make a cohesive, cogent presentation to the city for a development plan that includes everything, uh, from an infrastructure and road development, uh, basis. So, i- i- in a nutshell, we just think it makes a lot of common sense to, uh, to go ahead and grant the split with knowing that it's, that, that the road will have to be developed. Improvements will have to be installed in connection with an approved site plan, um, in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Is there a member of the board for this petitioner's representative, Mr. Eisenbacher?
Um, I'd like to ask, basically a blunt question that comes up a lot. What is the hardship that goes with the land for granting this variance request?
Mr. Thomas?
Yeah, it's, it, it's really twofold. It, it's economic, it, it's the cost of building a road. Um, and it's not just a road. It is, it is the underground, it's utilities, it's detent, detaining water. But we don't really know even where to detain it. Um, because it's, it's just a road that's gonna stub out in the, you know, it's an extension of stalwart. It'll just be built and now what do you do with it, right? How do you detain water? Um, and how do you, how do, I don't know, cause I don't have a crystal ball sitting here at the moment. And what this development will look like. Um, and, you know, it, I, I, I would guess that stalwart will be built just the way it's platted. Uh, but that doesn't necessarily the case. And so, anyway, so there's, there's, the, the difficulty is twofold. One, we don't know how it's going to be developed in the future. And the second is economic. It's a question of installing a road, installing infrastructure, and there's some practical problems with it too. Uh, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, which particularly relate to detain, wa, detaining water. Um, with, uh, you know, um, with, wh- when you're just building a road and stopping there and not continuing with the, the development of, 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 of the rest of the site. Where there's no detention area, there's no retention area. Um, I suppose maybe have to be something built underground, under the, under the street and ripped out later when the site eventually got developed. I, 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 I really don't know, but it is a, um, it is a problem that's confounding, um, our engineer. Um, I'm not saying it's insurmountable, but it certainly, um, it, it certainly is expensive and presents a practical difficulty and challenge, um, without knowing how the property's gonna be developed.
Okay, so as a follow-up, do you, can you disclose if the control of the property to the north is with, um, your client?
A hundred percent. It is, yeah, yes, sir. It, it is, it is owned by my client.
Okay, so he'd most likely be working on the southern part that we're talking about, a split and the north, when it would be appropriate. And he's not asking for any sort of, the splits that exist on the north and would be by, by right of the zoning ordinance are adequate. It's just the south that was a concern.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eisenbacher. Mr. Thomas, I'm just gonna address this real quick. Uh, I understand, well, I'm getting to understand your, your concerns, but just be aware, um, we, this board cannot consider ever an economic hardship. It's beyond our purview. But would your word, uh, inform me that obviously, how can you do certain things if they're unknown? That would, I would, this one member of the board, me, um, would consider that a hardship, but the economic piece is not within our purview. If you look at our practical difficulties, monies are never talked about because it's not within our, within our authorities. Just FYI on that, I, I think somebody wanted to be, Mr. McCollough, please.
Um, a question for the petitioner. Um, if I look at this, so basically you don't have a builder yet. You don't, you're not saying this is the site plan, this is what we're doing, you don't have a timetable for doing it. So this is just, you're just kind of like projecting out potentially what might happen. And you wanna see if we get the road before you even start looking at the development at all, when you get a builder, so there's no time gap for it.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Vice Chairman Bosnbrook.
Um, yeah, Mr. Thomas, I just, um, have a question. The, the letter that was submitted by Mr., uh, Bostick, um, I just, I didn't quite follow the, I guess, the chronology of this property in terms of how it was conveyed to this automotive media, and then there was a, a retained right to purchase. Can you just kind of explain that?
Sure.
Maybe you could represent and, and I guess that kind of, that, that sequence, just, just cause I didn't quite understand the letter.
Yes, sir. The, um, the evening was going on and so I didn't want to bore the, the, the board with, with facts that might be irrelevant, but since you asked, um, it, it, Mr. Bostick's, uh, company, five hundred West Long Lake, owned all of the property that you saw, uh, Mr. Evans display, um, earlier. So he owned the industrial building, he owned the property in question, and he owns the property to the north as Mr. Eisenbacher brought up. The, um, there were some circumstances that arose that created an urgency to sell five hundred West Long Lake, the industrial building that you saw earlier, um, to Mr. Whitehead's company. And so, uh, the, we, we did that and retained an option to purchase the land in question from, from Mr. Whitehead, and we did it because we, we are dealing with the variance and this whole split issue, and we could not get that accomplished in time to meet Mr. Whitehead's deadline. So we said, okay, we'll sell you the property, we'll retain the right to purchase this area back. Uh, in order to do that, we need to get it split. And that's, um, the whole idea was, look, you're gonna buy the resident, I mean, sorry, the industrial, we're gonna keep the residential. But unfortunately, part of the residential was included in the parcel ID of the industrial. So, we had to sell it, we just need to bet, and we need to split it and add it to the rest of the residential, essentially is what's going on.
Thank you, that helps. Appreciate it.
Uh, Mr. Rahman?
So the property is currently owned by who at this moment?
I, the, the property is owned, the, the, okay, the property in question is owned by Mr. Whitehead's company, um, the, the exact name I forget, sir.
Okay.
But, yes.
So, uh, can we ask for a variance for somebody else's property?
Well, he's given us permission to do that. I'm, I'm authorized to do it on his behalf.
Uh, the, I, I would ask a question to Mr. Bosn, Mr. Mosney, he said, okay, is it possible to ask for variance for somebody else's property?
If there's an interest in a property, they could, they could do that, yeah, like a, uh, offer to purchase or an option to purchase. That, that's always possible.
Do we have some documentation on that, that?
Page thirty.
Yeah.
Mr. Green?
Page thirty. Yeah, I, Mr. Thomas, is the future intent, uh, I, I, I think we, I think we all understand that there's a really good chance, the goal is to incorporate it with the, the lot across the paper stalwart. Is the, pardon lots, is, is the intent to, once these are split, uh, split them again to match the residential plotting to the east? So this would, this would end up theoretically being for, I, I-
Yes, it would be-
I don't think we can even use this in our tent, but like, I'm just trying to understand, is, is the goal for this to end up being for theoretically four homes?
Yes, it is. Yes, we have no plan, uh, to ask for variance or rezoning of this property. It's residential. It's going to be, it should be residential, it's gonna be developed as residential. It's just that.
Four homes, so two to the east, two to the west of the paper road. Is, is the plan to first chop it off from the industrial and then split, well, you've got then two lots, right? What is that, the intent then to split those two lots into four?
I, Mr. Green, I don't know the answer to that. The intention is to just combine all of the residential zone land into one parcel and e- eventually, with the help of a developer, make a presentation to, yeah.
Another member of the board for the petitioner's representative. Okay, before we move on with other business regarding this issue, we are going to take a short break, um, which will be about five minutes, and we were, are subject to the recall of the chairman, and thank you, everyone, and we will be back to Ms. Friends when we get back. Thank you very much. If we have quorum. We're not in order yet because I don't see quorum. Okay, the meeting's back in order. We do have quorum. One, two, three, four, we have four. Very good. So, Ms. Friends, we're gonna go to you. I do have the screen now on my right. Thanks to the support of Steve here at the IT department. So you want to do those after, I'll leave it up to you how you want to bring the comments from the public. Well, maybe perhaps we'll do the, the ones that came into you already, then we'll open up the public hearing like the last item, or however you want to do it.
Go for it.
You're still muted. There you go.
You want me to go now?
Yeah, please. Ms. Friends, why don't you read what you have that came in already, then we'll move up to the public hearing.
Okay. The first email is from Brandy Farkas, F A R K A S. It reads, I am replying in response to the zoning ordinance section four point zero six C R one dash B zoning. I live at five two four zero Daniels Drive, Troy, Michigan, four eight zero nine eight. I am against any building of apartments or condos in the small corner of our neighborhood. Especially with the only entrance on our street. Traffic driving through here is already a big problem. There are no sidewalks. Our children play here. There are two houses on the street with autistic children, our home is one of them. And there are two more homes that I know of with autistic and special needs children. There are, there are also multiple blind children in the neighborhood. Not to mention all of the people who own houses, take walks and bike rides in the streets. I truly feel that adding that much more traffic to speed up and down our street would put all of our safety at risk. Brandy Farkas. Uh, this is submitted by Dr. Daniel Farkas. Please do not grant the variance request regarding zoning ordinance section four point zero six C R dash one B zoning. Granting this ordinance will worsen the already dangerous situation on Daniels Drive, which this proposed variance would affect. This variance would allow for residential properties to be built at Daniels Drive and Long Lake. It would be an eyesore and would terrorize the residents of Daniels Drive especially. We have had to have the police out to install speed control devices in the past. Furthermore, a significant number of special needs and autistic children live on Daniels Drive. Drivers speed down Daniels Drive regularly despite efforts to stop them. A new crowded development at the end of our street will likely cause a death or serious injury due to what would be a large increase in reckless regular traffic up and down Daniels Drive. Please protect our children. Protect my eight-year-old autistic son, Landon, please. Truly, Dr. Daniel Farkas. Uh, this is submitted by Brandy Farkas, nurse. Do not approve this variance. Too many special needs kids live on Daniels Drive, right near Long Lake, and my son Landon Farkas is one of them. They don't understand about traffic. They will be hurt or killed if a residential property jammed with residents is built on the corner of our street. Please don't let our special needs kids be put at risk. Troy has enough housing. This is submitted by John and Peggy Major of five two one five Daniels. We do not want the variance changed on five hundred West Long Lake. If they are planning to put a roadway onto Daniels, we don't want the traffic on our road. If they are planning on building townhomes on the lots, we do not want them. This middle is by Danal, I'm sorry, Donald S P A C H. I am opposed to the variance request being proposed for five hundred West Long Lake. I do not want any additional traffic on Daniels. Please deny the variance request. Uh, this is the last email. This is submitted by Dawn Vilk, V I L K, of five one one zero Daniels Drive. I will not be able to attend the Zoom meeting this evening for the public hearing, but would like to voice my comments as I do not want this variance passed. Please let me know that you have received my comment, and I will take that into consideration. Okay, and then I will try to play the voicemails.
Hello, my name is Joe Ross. My husband's name is Jimmy Ross. We live at five four one oh Daniels Drive. And we're calling in regards to a rezoning request. And it's at Long Lake and Daniels. We would oppose this request mainly because we get so much traffic on the street as it is from the local businesses around here. And anything that would increase the traffic on this street would be horrible. And especially with the little kids that are around here, and there are no sidewalks. And because of that, I think we need to think safety first, and I think the request should be denied. Our number is two four eight seven oh three three one two nine.
You could hear that?
Yes, ma'am.
Correct? Okay, I mean, there's one more voice mail.
Hello, this is Dr. Daniel Farkas, F A R K A S, calling about zoning, or in section four, uh, four. Uh, point zero six C R one B, and it's something proposed at Long Lake and Daniels Drive here in Troy. Please do not approve this variance. There are too many autistic children up and down Daniels Drive, and one of them happens to be my son Landon. Um, this road, people drive terribly up and down. They drive at freeway speeds already, and we've already had the police out, um, in the past with traffic control devices, and it's still a huge problem. We put up signs, we put up everything, people just don't care. Um, if we have a population of people, some type of crammed, jammed residential or commerce going up in the street, it, I, I can, I hope not, I can almost guarantee someone is gonna get hit, um, or killed. Um, it's just, it's so common, it's terrible. I'm the, um, past president of the Troy Community Coalition, and I'm a doctor here in Troy, and I hope that this variance is not approved. And I hope that the builders find success elsewhere. Uh, if you'd like to talk to me, um, you can call.
Right, that concludes what I have.
Very good. So I understand, well, I'm gonna open the public hearing now for public comment, and I see that there are two people in queue for, or to be recognized, but Ms. Friends, please lead us in this portion. Um, they have to, what, signal that they want to be recognized somehow, some way? So if you are listening and you want to be recognized to make comment to the board, please do so. Or please indicate that by whatever methodology you were told to do at this time.
They could raise their hand.
They could raise their hand. I don't know how you do that on technology, but that's beside the point.
Raise your hand button.
Okay.
Okay, well, I have been called for a second time for public comment. If you'd like to raise your hand and be recognized, please do so at this time.
Point of interest, Jackie, I don't see anybody on here but the committees, so I don't know if we can even see if their hands are being raised or not.
No, I have the, I have it in front of me, so.
Okay, okay.
We're, we're, we're okay. Okay, so nothing has been, no one is wanting to be recognized for public comment, so I close that portion out. Mr. Green? You are muted.
Sorry, thank you. Um, I have two mute buttons. As a point of inquiry, uh, while you have the raise hand button, if you have anything, you've got a computer, a smartphone, or whatever, one of the people has just phoned in, and that doesn't have an immediate raise hand function, is there a way to unmute them momentarily and see if they have a comment?
Yes.
Uh, there's an attendees tab where you can see that.
Yes. Okay, so they are unmuted.
Okay, I will reopen the public hearing for public comment. If you can hear me and you'd like to speak to the board on this matter, please do so at, at this time. This is item five B. The person at area code two four eight three four zero XXXX, if you would like to be recognized, please speak at this time. That's the second, that's now the fourth call. And it looks like there's a red icon, Ms. Friends, to the far right. I don't know what that icon even looks like. Looks like almost a butterfly or something.
It's like a crosshair phone.
Then, um, there's a Fred on the phone as well. Is Fred here? Would you like to speak to the board on this matter? Fred, would you like to be recognized?
Hi, guys, I appreciate your, uh, your time and your, your willingness to go through this. I, um, I really don't have much to add from what the commenters did via email and voice message. I, I really applaud the residents of the neighborhood that have reached out. I share the same concern. I have a, a special needs son who, who plays in the area. We go for walks. I've called the police and reported license plates for cars that are treating the street like it's Big Beaver or Rochester Road. It, it's frankly quite ridiculous, the speeds, and then to add in a situation where you're going to add more homes and residences entering onto Daniels and Stallworth will just make a very poor situation worse. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Fred. Sounds like Fred lives in the neighborhood, and I'm gonna just give it one last chance to the caller at two four eight three four zero. And the rest is undisclosed by me. Caller, are you there? You are muted, and I see that as well. Last opportunity to speak to us. Okay, our public hearing is closed. Bring it back now to the board for consideration on any matter, Mr. McCauley, regarding this issue.
When I first looked at this, I was really excited with this. I had grown, I, that's where I grew up. I grew up in that neighborhood, lived there my entire life. My adult son lives in that neighborhood right now. The fact that they were gonna take the old DuPont plant and turn it into residential property and, and do that with it, I was extremely excited for it. Um, until I heard the petitioner tell me they don't have a builder, they don't have a plan in place, they don't have anything. And the first thing that ran through my mind was condos, duplexes, whatever you want, that would, at multiple levels of housing not in place. If they would have come to us and said, this is the plan, this is what we're gonna do, this is what we're gonna build, this is what we want, I would say, let's go for it. I like it. But I'm not hearing that. I'm hearing maybe this, maybe that, we don't have a builder yet, we don't know when we're gonna do this. There's too many, um, questions that are not answered, and I don't like it. I don't like it at all. I, I, my, my, I have flipped completely around. I don't want to even see this until there's a set plan, till there's a builder, till there's something in front of us that we can put on concrete, uh, that we can do. I'm not giving carte blanche to a builder with no parameters, that I am dead against it, and that's all I'm gonna say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCauley. Another member of the board, Mr. Eisenbacher.
There seems to be a lot of confusion on this. Um, what's in front of us is not a rezoning. This board doesn't do rezonings. The property's already R one B, which is the same zoning as the neighborhood around it. This board doesn't have any power to change from R one B. The item that's in front of us is to allow them to split two properties off of the one-piece industrial property so that they can proceed with development plans. And what, what the petitioner's representative said is that it's a har, the hardship is related to knowing whether or not they can split the properties. I don't understand how you can do the engineering for sewer systems, for water systems, for electrical, for all these different things that you have to do the engineering for if you don't know how much property you can use. Nothing else is in front of us, is, they're asking us, can we please have a variance to split two properties off? And unfortunately, for all the points that were brought up by the neighbors, the streets already exist on paper. And it appears that they were put in place at the same time as when Daniels was built, and Stallworth was built. They were put in place on paper, they just haven't ever been constructed. The, the space is there for those streets, and it's set for those streets. The current zoning ordinances and the current building requirements require that anything built would have sidewalks. That doesn't provide sidewalks for Daniels, that would be up to the residents that live there, and that's, again, completely outside of this board's control. That's something that has to go to the Planning Commission, and Mr. Ramon, as our representative, can, well, obviously, bringing that up when he's on the Planning Commission Board. But there's, there's no discussion of rezoning, there's no discussion of condos, there's no discussion of single-family homes. It's just a question of whether or not they can split off two residential properties to use them as residential properties, or are they unable to split off two residential properties? And the hardship is, is do engineering before you design your street. That's it. I'm in favor of making a variance.
Thank you. Mr. Desmond?
I agree with Mr. Eisenbach. All right, I, I, I see this just as a first step towards a wider future plan that is that outside the purview of this board, and that would move into the Planning Committee to have them figure out from there. to have them figure out from there what actually happens with it. But I mean, as, as somebody who's developed property himself, this would be the first step. If this isn't going to get clear, there wouldn't really be a second step. That would, you wouldn't spend all that money and all that energy and that time coming up with a myriad of plans for a potential thing that could happen. So I also would be in favor of it because I think all of the, uh, issues as to whether or not this would turn into a condo complex, which I can appreciate that, the, the, the desire to not have this be, you know, a giant multifamily complex in the middle of a residential neighborhood. But I think that's outside of us. I think that would be dealt with at the planning committee level. And I just see this as a, a, a chance to split property, to even see what's possible from there. So I also am in support. Thank you.
Mr. Desmond, Mr. Green?
Um, I, I think I have to start with a question, Mr. Motzney. Is, is it within our purview to, while retaining, of course, the R one B zoning, to grant instead, uh, permission to split these into essentially what I had mentioned earlier into four distinct plots, um, or lots, rather? So that we are providing them permission to the petitioner, the, the ability to, yes, make these residential, but then constraining it at, at least within, um, the limits of those property lines at which would lend them much more towards single-family residential as opposed to, uh, uh, individual separated, single-family residential, as opposed to, say, condos or townhouses? Because I am sympathetic to, to all of the neighbors. But on the other hand, I, 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 I was the one who brought it up in the first place this time, th- that this, this is, we're not talking about almost anything else. We're talking just about, can they cut it up? I'm saying, sure, let's cut it up. But yes, you can only cut it up in a way that's going to leave you with four single houses, which minimizes the additional traffic specific to that location. He already owns the other side of the, the, the paper road, uh, which is an entirely different project and doesn't seem to be cut either. We can't do anything about that, that's not in front of us. But here, could we, could we ask that? Could we say that?
My answer would be no. Uh, this is, you, you're not really approving the split. You're, they're asking for a variance to have no frontage on two lots. I think if you change that, you're actually increasing the, the variance, which has not been advertised and there's no notice of it. And I, I think that would actually be an increase in what's requested, which would not be allowed because there hasn't been a prior notice to the public.
Instead, that's off the table, how unfortunate.
Very good. Um, another member of the board, I'd just like to say real quick, before it escapes me, on the public comment from many of those, you know, I guess we've always heard from people in the neighborhood, um, you know, my concern always is for safety. Um, and if there are special needs kids, obviously, that's a incredibly important area. But this board doesn't have, within its purview, the concept of, okay, this on a particular street, if the kids are all not special needs, or if they are, you know, and we can take special steps in case children in the area are, uh, or require a, um, petitioner to bear certain fees and costs associated. And then lastly, you know, it just kind of begs the question, I think, um, if you're a parent of a special needs child and you chose to move into a neighborhood without sidewalks, uh, that's cause for concern right there. Now, perhaps some of these parents didn't have children when they bought the house and the ki- kids came later. But still, if you were considering having a family with children, um, and you bought into a neighborhood without sidewalks, I, I would say that would be a, a huge concern, you know, um, for any, we could talk to Mr. Desmond about any pi- a person, uh, purchasing property in any neighborhood, you know? So I think that's, that has to be off the table as far as the lack of sidewalks. Um, I think that Mr. Eisenbacher's point, he made a lot of good points. Uh, and, you know, as far as, you know, we do have one thing in front of us, which is, can these parcels be split? A vari- a variance is requested, but, you know, all the other things that have been mentioned as far as improvements and costs and construction and reconstruction, uh, that would all come through the planning commission. I know they're, they're skilled at knowing what needs to happen and when it needs to happen before any further approvals. So I, to Mr. Eisenbacher's point, I do agree with them. We don't know if condos would come. Potentially, they would, you know, if this variance is, is approved. But I don't know that a property owner can be obscured or, or rejected on their request for a variance based on, you know, could've, should've, would've, or basically what I would consider negative thinking about what they might do with the property, because it might be nothing, they may wanna lay, might be dormant, you know, who knows? We, we don't know. So we can't, in my opinion, we can't cast a vote based on, you know, twenty-five steps down the road, what might happen through other autonomous, uh, public bodies, planning commission, city council, and so forth. So those are my, uh, quick thoughts, and I wanna move on to another member. Mr. Evans first, Mr. Ramen.
Just to clarify, uh, I just wanna make it clear to everybody that the zoning, the current zoning on the property, single-family, so we've heard people talk about multiple family developments and townhouses, um, those aren't permitted. Only single-family homes are permitted, uh, in regards to the residential on this property. You know, things like bed and breakfast, maybe, uh, independent living facility could be allowed as a special, no, this wouldn't qualify either. So in regards to residential, I just wanted to clarify that under the current zoning, single-family residential is the main use that's allowed.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Evans. And I think Mr. Ramen wanted to be recognized.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mr. Clark. The, the question here is, uh, if we should, uh, allow the variance. And, uh, this is something that I see here, that, uh, we are asking for two parcels, but then it needs a frontage road, right? And we don't have that right now. So all the five criteria that we have to approve this, how can I connect to this approval with these five criterias? I'm kind of like, uh, not sure, why would I want to approve this? Based on what logic?
So I think that could be put to anyone who wants to be the author of the effort. I think your, your point is well taken, Mr. Ramen, open-ended, you know? Here I am, you know, argue for my vote, you know, if you want to see this approved. So we'll get back to that, I'm sure somebody else will perhaps address that. Mr. Green?
At present, the, the lot owned by, I'm gonna get this wrong, Mr. Whitehead, Mr. Whitehouse, um, is, i- it includes this R one B, this large chunk fork at the top, the north. If he were to develop this into homes, would, because it is all part of one plot, would it be possible for him to not have to cut in? Uh, I mean, sewer would be essential unless somehow well, but, uh, for them to, to allow, uh, the egress, allow the frontage for these to be essentially, uh, Daniels in front of the DuPont plant? Or would that not, not be allowed? Because it's all one parcel.
So is that a question directed to, to a particular person?
I don't even know. I, I, that one's probably to Mr. Evans, if he knows, but it looks like Mr. McCauley might have an answer. Essentially, could you avoid street cut-ins on the paper road by using Daniels in front of the one B?
Mr. Evans, do you wanna address that?
For the current owner as opposed to Mr. Bostick?
Say it again, just so I.
Make sure I understand it. Said, street cut-ins, Daniels?
Yeah, so, so right now, um, if any, any residences were to be placed, and, and this is outside of scope, but, um, if any residences were to be placed on these theoretically newly chopped off areas, but let's say it didn't get chopped off. Let's say the actual current owner chose to develop these into residential properties.
Uh-huh.
They would need sewer, but would they still need frontage because they are part of an existing lot? Because they would still have the frontage for Daniels that is held primarily by the industrial area.
Well, they do have frontage on Long Lake right now. I, I'd have to see a development to know, because we're talking.
With that too, yeah.
Yeah, if you're talking about putting, one of the tenants of single-family development is, uh, you can only have one house on one parcel. So I, I don't think it'd be feasible to put a house on the back parcel without splitting it off.
That would, that would be a monster.
Yeah, so I'd have, I, I think the answer in that lies in, really, let's see a plan.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCauley.
I'm with Mr. Evans, let's see a plan, because even if I look at this, if they were to develop this, they could run the, the, the street is partially there, Denzmore, that comes off of all, Long Lake, coming into the parking lot of the old DuPont plant. If they extended that completely down, there'd be no need for Stallworth or, um, to be developed. And there would be no need for, uh, Fabius to be developed. But they could, but there'd be no need for it. So really, the key there is, really in my mind, is that if you look at Denzmore, if they get a plan, show me a plan, show me something we can do. This can be developed without that, without granting this variance. That's what I wanna see. And I, I really struggle with giving a open-ended request with nothing attached to it, because we have no idea what's gonna happen. I, I wanna see more.
Thank you, Mr. Eisenbacher.
Thank you. Um, I believe there's part of our zoning ordinance that you have to have a block wall between residential and non-residential uses. And you can't have your primary access to a neighborhood on a private road that goes through an industrial complex. So the concept of putting the access through the industrial area, I believe, is precluded by our zoning ordinance. Um, I'd like to hear from Mr. Evans if he's heard of that anywhere in the city where you get to a residential property by driving through an industrial property. Um, I'm pretty sure it's prohibited. So if this were to be developed as residential, as Mr. McCauley's was initially expressed interest in, and I think it'd be great, um, because that's what it's zoned for, that's what its use is, that's what it's platted for currently. Um, we're not looking at rezoning it, we're not looking at, um, any changes other than allowing those properties to be split off in the back where a street does not currently exist in reality. It only exists in paper. Um, there was one other point that was brought up. I was trying to remember, um, looking at the map. Oh, the property to the north. Um, it's not just two properties, it's ten properties. The size of those lots is enough, and it's currently platted, is for ten different house sites. So if you, um, it doesn't make sense to say that you'd have two houses on the north side and two houses to the south side, because it, the current layout is, would be twelve houses, if it continues forward. But that, again, that's outside of our purview, that's just looking at where the current lot lines are from when it was platted way back in probably the nineteen forties, fifties or sixties, when the subdivision was built. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans.
Uh, i- i- if it's okay to respond to Mr. Eisenbacher's.
Please.
Be a two, two things. So, um, the ordinance, when you have a, an industrial use separated from a residential use, uh, provides the option to have either a screen wall or strictly vegetation. So it's not a requirement that there be a block wall, uh, but in certain instances, you can have a wall. Um, while I haven't researched it, it does not sound familiar that our ordinance specifically says, uh, access through industrial, what access might mean. Um, I guess in this situation, somebody would be driving through private property to get to the back of the residential. Um, I'm just not sure if our ordinance says that. I do know that according to the survey that they provided that, uh, uh, a couple of streets within the current property configuration have been vacated. So, uh, presumably, if I'm following Mr. Eisenbacher's thought, the access somehow would be through a, a, a driveway or something like that off of Long Lake. But I'm not familiar with, I, I, I haven't researched to see if the ordinance actually says that, I just, it doesn't ring a bell, but I haven't researched it.
Yeah, thank you, Vice, Vice Chairman Bosnbrook, we'll get, circle back around, please.
Yeah, thank you, I just wanna agree with Mr. Ramen. My, what I'm, what I'm, uh, unsure of at this point, I, I think Mr. Eisenbacher has made very good points, and I, um, I, I definitely see the validity of a lot of what he's saying. What I'm trying to piece together in my mind is how this fits into the statement of practical difficulty that, um, you know, the petitioner is required to show. Um, and I'm, you know, I'm, I, I think that's, at least for me, would be helpful to focus our discussion, um, where, for those who are, um, proponents of this, of granting the variance, where they s- uh, see the record supporting those specific, um, criteria, uh, that's kind of where I'm stuck right now. I don't know, there's been a lot of discussion about that to this point.
Thank you. As to Vice Chairman Bosnbrook's point, if somebody who's spoken in favor of this wants to be heard, and that would be Mr. Eisenbacher, why don't you address that, then we're gonna move on to Mr. Green?
Okay, so that we have a resolution in front of us to discuss, I would like to move a resolution for approval of the split of the two properties as listed in the agenda. And in terms of our, um, our five items of practical difficulty, for item A, this property is extremely irregular shape and encompasses multiple zoning sta- um, zoning districts. B, it is this property, it's not an off-site item that's, uh, that's causing the problem. C, it's, it's not of a personal nature, it's of the, uh, the zoning ordinance nature with an order of, basically an order of operations. They wanna be able to know that they have the property available to use before the engineering is done, based on the statements we received from the, uh, petitioner's representative and our packet. D, um, characteristics which make this compliance with the dimensional requirements difficult must not have been created by the current or previous owner. The characteristic is that the city ordinance requires a street be built before the split happens, but putting the utilities underground underneath the street and doing the engineering for the street is difficult to do before you know if you can split the property off. And E, the proposed variance will not be harmful or alter the essential character of the area. They're not asking for a change, the zoning is staying the same, and we don't know, there's no proposal for the building at this point, the proposal is for using within the same, same zoning.
Thank you, is there a second for that motion?
I'll second that, so we have something to discuss.
Mr. De- Desmond, seconds. Mr. Green also had his hand up. Mr. Green, did you want a second? And I know you wanted to speak, okay. You don't want a second, but you do wanna speak. Is that correct? Is that correct? Sorry. You were muted.
That is correct.
Okay, please be recognized.
Thank you, sir. Um, so. I agree, I would much rather see a plan first. Uh, this. This problem does not exist, right? So as it stands right now, the land is owned by somebody who had no particular interest in developing it. Uh, as far as I can tell, uh, the land is owned by somebody who is not actually themselves calling for the split. They have simply signed on because they're the landowner. Um, the, uh, problem is nominally. Uh, of the previous owner's creation, right? Mr. Mr. Bostic owned the property and did not at that time. Uh, choose to attempt to cut it up or, or address the board before that or, or, you know, create a private road through. Which by the way, there, there is precedent for, uh, for city use for, for that. That's the, the transit center, right? Like that, that actually turned into a bit of a fight because the buses were going through private property. But, um, that's, that's public use through private. And so that's a similar sort of crisscross. So I don't think that, that comes into play. But like, what that means is that Mr. Bostic had those opportunities and, and perhaps because of the economic downturn, I'm speculating. Whatever the reason for the rapid sale was, uh, that precluded addressing it in the eleventh hour. But this was, you know, previously the applicants. Uh, and so that's, that's there. So that, that specifically is point D, the, 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 the trouble is created by. Um, by the applicant essentially, um, or, or the current owner. They, they could work out an agreement to create a private road or create a public road discussed with the city. There, there are ways that the current owner could develop that property, uh, as is and work in a partnership. Uh, with, with Mr. Bostic, uh, a bit like Sony Marvel allowing Spider-Man to be used in Marvel movies and then cutting him in on the deal. That's it, it would, it is possible without, without approving this split, that this could be handled between two private parties. Uh, the characteristics making compliance with dimensions difficulty, uh, yeah, that definitely does relate to those premises. But it also doesn't because what's missing is, uh, the streets in front of it, not. Um, you, you know, you could say that it's, you know, the proximity is when you're talking about the hundreds, the frontage, the hundred feet, fifty feet, whatever that might be. And so then it's, uh, when we would grant something allowing it five feet forward or whatever that might be, that would be. Related to the street and not the, the home, but that's not true. We're not talking about building on that. We're saying that there are literally missing roads. That problem isn't, isn't actually the property. That's something that, that either the current owner or even Mr. Bostic, because he owns the land to the north. Uh, might take up with the city requesting that that road be put in, um, possibly with some actual legal agreement. That, that he will develop according to whatever, uh, perhaps the planning commissioner or city council accepts. Um, and as, as much as something like allowing townhouses or condos, which is not currently zoned for. Uh, or even homes would go potentially before council, um, because of the, the sewage and whatnot. That would then allow for a large amount of public comment and for, for those with serious concerns about health and safety and welfare. Uh, can bring that forward. There is a, there is a, a way to address that now. It, it. The split would not inherently cause a safety concern. Um, it would not inherently impair anything. I don't think that. Uh, I, I believe that this meets the conditions of E. Um, and, uh, as it stands right now, that is, I think, the only condition it meets. Uh, and as much as I said that for the other one, that, that was enough. Um, with the other circumstances surrounding it, the other petition that we heard this evening. Uh, that was for between six inches and a foot and this is not, and so I will not be supporting.
Thank you. Another member of the board. Final call for discussion. His friends were prepared for votes. Thank you.
Mr. Rahman.
You are muted, Mr. Rahman.
No.
Mr. Clerk.
Yes.
Mr. Green.
No.
Mr. Desmond.
Yes.
Mr. Bosnbrook.
Yes.
Mr. Eisenbacher.
Yes.
Mr. McCauley.
No.
Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Uh, thank you, Mr. Thomas. You have a very good night and we are moving right along because it's getting late to.
Just wanted to say thank you to the chairman and the board.
Thank you. Looking at the right, this is. Is the right one. Um. So we moved from there to. Hold on one second, everybody. Seems like this agenda is not correct. I don't know why, how that happened.
Excepts communication.
Oh, there, I'm sorry. I didn't see Mr. Motzni because it's on the side. Uh, we do go, go to communications. So, Mr. Evans, do we have any communications that you would want to share with the board? You're muted. Looks like you're saying no. Okay, I'm like, you're still muted. I'm gonna go with no because you're shaking your head no. Okay, we move on to item number seven. And we have, uh, the world's greatest legal advisor to any board in the public space, uh, Mr. Motzni. And he is going to present to us some information. Um, so I see that Mr. Kenfree still is on, but he's muted, so that's good. Um, we have. Full board and this will be good information. So, Mr. Motzni.
Thank you. I'm Mr. Chair, I'm gonna, I might need some help here. Can people see my screen?
It's about, yes, Troy's owning Board of Appeals, not full screen. Yes.
It, and am I moving it right now?
Yes.
I see it live. You can full screen it though, because I see a lot of space too.
Yeah, what do I do to full screen? The yellow dot or?
The green. That one.
You Mac people.
Uh.
Mac, yeah.
Uh, better?
Yep.
I, and can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Because I'm getting a note saying my internet connection is weak, so I'm a little concerned.
It's stable so far.
Okay, well, I have like twenty-six slides and I'm not gonna read them all because it's a late hours late. I'm gonna highlight a number of things and then at the end, open up for questions. Uh, rather than taking questions on each slide, uh, if that's okay with everybody.
Okay.
Uh, we, our city attorney's office tries to do a legal update. Uh, the theory was we would do one of these every year, but somehow that fell by the wayside. So it's been a while since our last one. Uh, but, uh, the first slide establishment of the zoning board of appeals. The Michigan Zoning Enabling Act is the, the statute that allows municipalities to. Uh, have a zoning ordinance that also allows for, uh, zoning a board of appeals. The purpose of which is to provide some reasonable relief from the mandates of the ordinance if appropriate. Uh, that relief comes in the form of, of many, uh, things that the board can do. The most typical relief is a dimensional variance and most of my discussion will probably focus on that tonight. But this board also has the power to interpret the zoning ordinance, uh, interpret the zoning map. Uh, here at appeal of an administrative decision and to grant it use variance. All votes, uh, in to approve any of these items. Uh, there's a requirement that there be four affirmative votes, the exception of the use variance, which requires five votes. Commission member alternative. Because the, the, or the alternate, the planning commission member, uh.
Now you're starting to chop up.
Voting number of. Okay. Yeah, I'm getting notes saying my internet is weak. I'm sorry. Is that a little better?
It, it is. I think if you. It's, this is to, to the discretion of the chair, but I think if you drop your video, the audio will have a, a clean path. Is that okay? You would, you would stop your video but keep talking and then keep your screen share as well. But right now you've got video, audio and screen. So it's just more bandwidth. I, I'm getting technical. I'm not trying to, sorry.
Yeah, you're getting technical. So, can you hear me at this moment?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, the planning commission member on the ZBA. Uh, cannot vote on a matter where he or she has voted on the same property before the planning commission. Uh, I highlight the word voted because there is a distinction. If a site plan before the planning commission actually has a vote. And the planning commission member of the ZBA votes on it. If that matter then comes to the ZBA for variance, the, the planning commission member could not vote. And an alternate would have to fill in. On the other hand, if a site plan review comes before the planning commission. And they don't vote on it, they just pass it along to see what the ZBA will do first. Uh, based on the way the ordinance is written, the planning commission member could still vote. At the ZBA hearing because they did not actually vote at the meeting. Uh, again, I'm gonna try to highlight these because there's several slides. But as most of you know, variance is essentially an excuse to, uh, if granted, to not comply with the law. Some people have used the term that it's permission to break the law, which is probably not a good way to describe it. Because if you get a variance, you're essentially complying with the law. But, uh, some general things, you have to have a public hearing and notice before a variance can be granted. A variance runs with the land, uh, it doesn't, it'll be there forever. Uh, if a variance is denied based on the city's zoning ordinance. A request for the same variance for the same property cannot be made until one year has passed unless there are substantially changed conditions. As I've indicated, most variances are dimensional variances. Uh, a dimensional variance, uh. But can be granted if there are practical difficulties. And now that's a term defined by the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. Actually, it's not defined. The, the Zoning Enabling Act says. The, a dimensional or non-use variance can only be granted if there are practical difficulties. The zoning act leaves it up to municipalities to decide how practical difficulties are accomplished. And in our ordinance, we've established the five criteria that you're all very familiar with. When a variance is granted, uh, this board does have the power to approve conditions. Approve conditions, uh, for public safety and welfare, uh, reasons. A variance, uh, that is granted should be the minimum variance, uh, available. And if this board finds that, uh, a matter or solution could be had for the property without a variance. Technically, the variance should be denied. Uh, this next slide just sets forth the five criteria. And as we've discussed tonight, under Troy's own ordinance, all of them have to. Uh, be satisfied before variance may be granted. And I'm gonna discuss some of those criteria. One of the criteria is there ha- is there has to be some exceptional characteristics. Of the property, uh, that, uh, that makes. Developing the property more difficult than it would for other properties in, in the area. And, uh, those exceptional characteristics could be the size of the lot or the shape of the lot. It could involve geographical or environmental matters. For instance, if there's wetlands on the property. Uh, that might satisfy this criteria. If there are large trees on the property, that might satisfy the criteria. Uh, another, the second criteria is the variance must be related to the premises. Well, that seems like, uh, an, an easy one to decide whether or not, uh, it's satisfied. But, uh, I guess an example would be if somebody says they, they want to build this accessory structure on their property. In the middle of their yard, uh, even though it might violate setbacks because that will, uh, shade their yard from. Uh, the ugly property to the north or something to that effect. Um. That obviously would be a request for a variance based on the characteristics of someone else's property and not your own. I know that's kind of a simple example, but, but essentially that's the, the purpose of. Uh, a variance can only be granted if it's related to the premises in question and not related to some other premises. The variance must not be of a personal nature. Uh, what, what that means is. If the variance is based on something personal to the applicant, that should not be the sole reason for granting the variance. Uh, a personal reason could be a financial reason. For instance, if someone says, I need this variance because I can't pay. The cost of moving to a new home, uh, that would be a, a, a personal reason. As opposed to, uh, to a, a reason related to the premises itself. Another time, um. When we get these variance requests because somebody says that they need this sun room, for instance, because of a disability or an illness. Uh, that would not be a reason for granting a variance because that would be a request based on personal reasons and not related to the land it's, itself. Uh, the variance should not be granted if the only reason for the variance is based on something that's created by the owner. Or a previous owner of the property. Uh, one instance where this may occur is if, if somebody's requesting a variance. Because of the way the land was divided or a lot split was granted by a previous owner. That in and of itself is not a basis for granting a variance because if they need that variance because of the previous lot split. That is not a basis for granting, uh, if the variance could still be granted in those circumstances, that they'd meet the criteria in other ways. But that, that would not be a good reason for granting a variance. Another situation that, that actually came up tonight. If, uh, if somebody builds a structure without a permit. It's, i- in. Then we find out that it violates the, uh, setbacks or some other provision. Uh, the owner's argument that, well, it's gonna cost me a lot of money to remove this structure at this time. That in and of itself is not a basis for granting a variance. Because that is a self-created reason. However, in those cases, if the applicant can still meet the criteria in other ways. The variance could be granted. And what we, we do in those cases, as somebody mentioned tonight, is you. Analyze the case as though the structure wasn't there in the first place, but it was still, uh, a vacant spot or, or, or whatever. Uh, dimensional variances, uh, should not be granted if granting the variance will be harmful to, um. To the public, uh, if granting the variance might increase traffic or might cause a fire hazard. Uh, those are all reasons for a denial. But, uh, if you're going to deny a variance based on that, uh, provision. It's a good idea to have, uh, some evidence that would in fact prove that's the basis for denial. For instance, if someone comes up with a traffic study showing an increase in traffic. Uh, that might be a basis for denial. On the other hand. If you want to grant a variance, find that this criteria has been met with. You could indicate using the traffic study example that the traffic study shows there will not be a harm or adverse effect in traffic. So, uh, again, that's one of the criteria that has to be met, that the variance would not be, uh, harmful to the character of the area. Uh, this issue was discussed tonight as well. A decision of variance requires substantial evidence on the record. Uh, one of the ways that could occur is the person granting or moving to grant the variance. When they go through the five criteria, uh, could point out something on the record that supports. Uh, that particular provision, for instance, they could say, well, based on the study. Presented by the applicant or by Joe Smith or something, I find that this criteria has been met. It it's a good idea to mention something. Uh, based on the record when you go through the five criteria, but another way that could occur, however. Is if you're going through the five criteria, you you might even say something well like. Uh, zoning member McCully said. Uh, this criteria is not met because of this, that that might be something you could do, the point being is it's always. A good idea to point to something that was said or discussed or presented at the meeting. To support your reasoning for why the criteria was met or not met. I think I already discussed that, but the proposed variant. This must be the necessary. Uh, and this was also discussed tonight, that this board does have the power to grant a lesser variance than what was requested. Without requiring a new posting or publication, on the other hand. This board cannot grant a. A larger variance than requested without postponing the meeting and having a new publication. So the public is aware of the larger request. If. If there, if this board does find that there is a method that the proposed uh. Problem that the applicant is facing can be resolved without. Uh, the granting of a variance, and there's evidence to support that, then again, the variance should be. Should be denied, for instance, the example I I give. Let's say somebody. Is asking to build a, uh, I'll use the accessory voting structure. On a certain portion of the property where they would violate the setbacks. If the very, if the evidence shows that the applicant by moving. The structure to another portion of the property can meet the setbacks. Uh, technically, that would be. A different. Solution not requiring a variance and the variance could be denied, but but as Mr. Green pointed out. Uh, it all depends on the circumstances, for instance, in that that case. Uh, if the applicant says, well, I'm not gonna, I I know there's more room on this side, but I have wetlands or I have a large tree on. On that side of the property, then in that case, maybe you could find that they they met the standards. Uh, the board. In granting a variance can impose conditions, uh, those conditions uh, have to be reasonable. Uh, and necessary to promote the public health and safety and welfare and. And to should ensure compatibility with surrounding land uses, for instance. If putting up a screen wall might protect neighboring property from. Any adverse effect of the variance, that could be a condition. Uh, the conditions must be related to the use of the land and not the person who was using the property. By way of example. If this board decides to grant a variance. That in, they cannot impose a condition such as the property can only be used by people who purchase it as opposed to renters. That would be the condition that would not be valid because. In that case, you're. Imposing a condition based on the people who are using the property rather than the property itself. This board does have the power to grant uh, use variances. It's a much stricter standard. Uh, it requires five votes for approval. And essentially, to to have a use variance granted, there the applicant really has to demonstrate. With substantial evidence that the property can't be used. Uh, for any uses allowed under the uh, zoning ordinance, it's it's quite a burden and most use variances. Pretty much should be denied. Uh, usually a better remedy is to seek rezoning. Uh, one thing I wanted to point out. That's different with use variances as opposed to dimensional variances. For use variance, our ordinance says that the need for the variance. Must not be self-created by the applicant. And that is actually. Uh, one aspect of a use variance is more lenient than a non-use variance, because as you know. Or dimensional. Variances are ordered, and it says if it's self-created by the applicant or a previous owner, the variance should not be granted. But with regard regard to use variances, our ordinance limits that to. Uh, create if the hardship is created by the applicant. And the previous owner does not have to be. Uh, considered in that for use variances. We always encourage site visits. Before. Uh, making a decision on a variance. Uh, so someone on the board can actually picture the property and see the property. But some. Words of caution, when you go on a site visit. You should not talk to anybody while doing the visit and. In particular, the applicant themselves, because it's not proper for one board member to receive information. Regarding a variance that's not shared with the entire board. Uh, it's it's best to do a site visit by yourself as opposed with other members. Uh, it's our recommendation that you wear some. I could identification identifying you as a member of the zoning board of appeals. Uh, maybe Paul could help get that information or get that documentation if if somebody needs that or a site visit. This board does have the authority to grant administrative appeals. Uh, there was one recently, as this board remembers, there was an appeal of planning commission decision. Uh, there are specific requirements before the appeal can be considered, it must be filed within thirty days. Uh, generally, if an appeal is. Is filed, it stays any proceedings with regard to enforcement of the ordinance, for instance, if. If. Uh, somebody decides to revoke a permit, for instance. For violation of the zoning ordinance and that decision to revoke the permit is appealed. The city could not take any action to enforce the replication and until there's a decision on the administrative appeal. Uh, on a, on an appeal, this board has the power to either modify, affirm. Or reverse the administrative decision. The slide that is included in our materials actually had a typo. Uh, but this slide is correct. In order for this board to reverse or modify an administrative decision. It has to find one of the cr- just one of the criteria, in other words, if the decision was arbitrary or capricious, it was based on a an erroneous finding of material fact. Or the decision was an abusive discretion. Or the decision was based on a, and not, and not, can't even speak, it's getting late, an erroneous interpretation of the ordinance. To, you just have to find one of those before this board can either reverse or modify. An administrative decision, however, to affirm an administrative decision, the board has to find that. It it has to find the decision was not arbitrary and not based on erroneous finding, the difference is. Uh, an affirmance is just basically affirming decision, you don't have to. The initial slide I I provided was incorrect and this one is correct. Uh, next item, interpretation of the zoning ordinance. Or or zoning map. Uh, again, there there's uh, standards that must be. Followed and set forth uh, in in the zoning ordinance. With regard to modifying the map, that's a type of request I've never seen before this board, but it could happen, for instance, if. There's a parcel on the border of like, let's say, an R T or an R one designation. And someone wants to build a duplex which could be built. In the R T but not the R one. And they could come to this board and asking them for an interpretation whether their property is in the R T or the R one zoning. And when the board does that. Uh, there are requirements set forth in section four point oh three. Of the zoning ordinance that must be followed in making that interpretation. Uh, deliberation resolutions, this is pretty much self-explanatory. Uh, essentially, you don't wanna negotiate or 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 suggest how a developer should redesign their project. If you're presented with new information at the meeting itself and you need time to digest that information, it's perfectly okay to ask to postpone the matter. Again, use the templates when granting or denying. Uh, the variance, they're 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 very helpful to make sure that the decision is supported by competent. Evidence on the record. It's not always necessary to read verbatim. The particular item being approved, you could indicate uh, approving the variance as uh, requested in the agenda packet. It's also. Uh, appropriate to ask the person making the resolution to clarify if you do not understand it before you vote on it. And. Uh, this board, I think, knows this, but it's always appropriate during the discussion period to give your reasons why you would approve. Or reject a variance because that information actually comes in handy when we have to indicate there is evidence on the record and supporter or. Or uh, against the variance. Uh, the city has established the Board and Committee Appointee Code of Ethics, and I'm not gonna read through all of these, that it's. Lot of it is common sense stuff, uh, for instance, don't use derogatory language. At at zoning board meetings, uh, the. Key. Item is. You should avoid a conflict of interest. When you're on the zoning board. Uh, conflicts of interest, uh, there are discussed in the Michigan Constitution. Uh, they're discussed by the Michigan statute. If there is a conflict of interest, then. The board member that has the conflict uh, should. Uh, abstain from voting and they should not participate in the procedure at all and should actually. Uh, leave the room. It sometimes it's difficult to determine whether an actual conflict exists. Uh, uh, the easiest one is if you have a a financial interest in the outcome. Uh, then there is clearly, clearly a conflict, uh. If you have a personal interest in the outcome of the variance, you may may have a conflict, but. It all depends on the circumstances, for instance. Uh, if you're a guy in your bowling team that you see once a week is asking for a variance, that's probably not a conflict. But if a close personal relative, on the other hand, is asking for a variance, that probably is a a conflict based on personal reasons. What I, we suggest is if you have. A question, you could always bring the matter to the board and ask for the board's. Uh, uh, decision and whether they believe it's a conflict, and if the board agrees it is a conflict of interest, then that. Particular board member should abstain and leave the room whether there's discussion. Like, there's a lot of information I provide in the open meetings that can freedom of information. There the sunshine laws that were passed at our gate. Look. Had access to the. Functions of government so that there could be some assurance that. Uh, secret decisions weren't being made behind the public's back. Uh, some of the basic requirement of the Open Meetings Act. Is. Meetings uh, must be open to the public. Uh, and if you have a meeting. Let me backtrack a little bit, you have to be careful. Uh, when you are meeting with other board members, because whenever you have a quorum of. Board members together and there's any discussion leading to a decision. That could constitute a meeting subject to the Open Meetings Act. And that's why we tell you when you reply to an email, uh, for instance, you should not. Reply to all because email contact between a quorum. Discussing any zoning matter could be deemed a meeting, and if that's not open to the public, you could be in violation of the Open Meetings Act. Uh, the Open Meetings Act requires that all members of the public be allowed to address. A a public meeting. We can't require that they live in the city, uh. We can ask that they provide a name and address, and if there are rules governing the process, we can. Uh, limit the time period for which they may speak, and we can may also. Provide. That the public comment can only occur at certain times on the agenda. But the general rule is we cannot uh, prevent a member of the public from speaking of. Uh, an open meeting which would cover the Z B A. Again. Uh, the Open Meeting Act does allow what's known as a closed session. Where the board can meet. Outside of the public. And there are specific provisions that would allow for a closed session. I'm not gonna go all over those because I can't think of any circumstance where the Z B A would be authorized to be in closed session. Uh, the Z B A is also. Uh, subject to the Freedom of Information Act because it is a public body. Which means any written document referencing Z B A information can and must be disclosed to the public. And this could include emails. By between Z B A members or members of the Z B A with the public. And it could even include emails on your own personal computer, and that is why we suggest if you receive an email on your own personal computer. Uh, regarding a Z B A matter. Uh, you should either not respond, or if you do respond, just indicate it would be improper for me to respond. We also suggest that you uh, provide the city administration with a copy of the email or the or the letter, whatever communication it is. And then uh, the administration could decide whether it's relevant and share it with the entire board members. The entire board for a meeting. Violations of both the Freedom of Information Act, the Open Meetings Act can lead to fines, costs. Or or invalidation of Z B A decisions, so it is important that that we comply. And. Any decision of this board can be appealed by right to the Oakland County Circuit Court. And one thing I'd like to point out is. That. Uh, rule applies to anybody aggrieved by a Z B A decision. Uh, most of us are familiar with the fact that people who are denied variances sometimes appeal, in fact, I have an argument tomorrow on. An appeal before circuit court on a various denial. But the reason I wanna point out the aggrieved provision is because. If you grant a variance and the next door neighbor. Is affected by that. The neighbor could also appeal the granting of the variance. And from a legal standpoint. It's actually much easier for our office to defend a denial because a variance could be denied for any one of the five reasons. Than this to defend a granting of the variance, because then we have to present to the circuit court. Evidence uh, supporting all five criteria. However, an appeal to the circuit court is not. A chance for a new argument, for instance, they. An appellate can't argue things that were not brought up at the Z B A meeting, the appeal is based on matters that were part of the Z B A record. And the Z B A. Uh, record is examined by the court to see if it complies with the constitution, is based on proper procedure, supported by competent material and substantial evidence on the record. And also represents the reasonable exercise of discretion granted by law to the Board of Appeals. That's what the circuit court would decide if there is an appeal from. A decision. And I know I kinda sped through that, but I. It was getting late, so uh, any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Matz?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, I'm curious for site visits. Um, I'm particularly not comfortable going to a site. Not talking to the homeowner and sort of traipsing around. That's sort of like trespassing.
It is trespassing, good point. Yes, uh. Yes, you should get permission. From the the homeowner, unless, of course, it's like an industrial property or or a commercial property, but if it's a residential property. Uh, yes, you should knock on the door, tell him why you're there, but not.
Sorry, Mr. Matz, I think Paul's got something.
Okay.
Sure, have it.
Yeah, and pursuant to what Alan was saying, um. We do place on our application where they sign, they actually give us permission to go visit the property and go on the property, but. I agree with everything. I agree with everything that's been said, I mean, if you're going to go to someone's house, you don't want them looking out their back window and seeing a guy walk around. So it makes perfect sense to knock on the door um in my experience. Um I make sure not to discuss the case and tell them if they start to talk about the case, you know, I'm just here to look. You got to tell the whole board this, um will you give me permission to walk around and, you know, if you want to come with me. With me as a comfort level, we'll have it, that's that's the way I've addressed it in the past when I've had to visit sites myself.
Okay, and then under personal reasons, a lot of our discussions uh. Go around on what's personal and what's not necessarily personal, and when I look at my property. And everything I use on my property, it's all personal. Personally, I like to be able to have a place to sleep, personally, I like to have a place to shower, fix food. Have a roof over my head so it's dry, these are all personal needs that I have. Everything that's built on property has a personal need associated with it. How do we differentiate and split the line between a general need? And a very specific personal need, because if they say, oh, I'm handicapped and I need a ramp, that's American dis ADA need. Where anyone who is um. Is disabled could need it. I'm having and a lot of our discussions are on that particular item, is this a personal need or is this not a personal need?
Well, like I I I told Mr. Green, each case depends on the peculiar circumstances. If somebody says they want a variance and the only reason is because I have a disability. And I need this sunroom, if that's the only reason for the variance, then it should be denied because that's clearly a personal reason. But if they say I have this disability and I need this sunroom, but also uh the the property is shaped. Uh like an L and there's nowhere else I could build it, then you know, you could still grant the variance for other reasons. But if the only reason is a personal reason, uh then then it should be a denial.
And, okay. A lot of our, the people that come before us are extremely confused about that. Is it possible to include the information that you put in this um presentation about what a personal need is? In the application packet, uh Mr. Evans, so that it explains it more? Because like our last meeting, we had a gentleman who said this isn't of a personal nature, and then everything he described was a personal nature.
Well, what happens is. To avoid providing. Too much influence on what they might say in their application, I actually require a pre-application meeting. So people can understand these things, but in reality. They get a better idea of exactly what all five of the standards, you know, how how they. What they mean in more layman's terms, but they still come to the meetings and say. Things that don't support the five standards, so um I'm a little hesitant about giving guidance.
Okay.
In the application itself, but having a pre-application meeting. It's an ex- it it sometimes it can actually be a lot better because you get an idea of particulars, you know. I also try to give them an idea if they're going to get approved or not, but it's just my opinion and you guys never hear it.
Yes, okay, and then the whole concept of a prior owner or a current owner. Every one of these properties that's funny shaped is funny shaped because a prior owner drew the lines that way. Every setback that's being violated is because someone put a house in that position or a building in that position. Relative to the roads and the boundaries. Nothing that comes before us isn't related somehow to a prior owner or the current owner, and it's really hard to draw that line. And you've seen us struggle with that as a board for where is the line between this. Wasn't the owner's fault versus it was the owner's fault.
The prior owner.
Or the yeah, or how many prior owners do we go through, is it just the immediate?
Yeah, it is a fine line and, yeah, I mean it. Again, you have to decide on a case by case basis and of course you could all use your own reasonable. Uh reasonableness in some cases, but let's say uh. There was a subdivision created a hundred years ago. I don't think if if you go back a hundred years, I might I might say that's that's too 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 remote. But it was just the previous owner who created the lot split and you purchased the lot. With knowing that it was shaped that way and knowing it didn't have enough frontage. Uh that would be a a self, that would be the need for the variance that is created by by the previous owner.
So.
Yeah, you make a good point, it's.
So basically, every first owner of a house has the burden of the builder, who's the previous owner, having done the splits.
Right, that's the way our ordinance is written. It, you know, it it maybe it's something for City Council to address, but that's why that's is why I actually wanted to point out. The difference between what our ordinance says for use variances and. Uh dimensional variances because use variances refer to self-created hardships by the applicant. Whereas our non-use variance refers to a problem created by a previous owner, so.
I've got a quick question here, and I I I had always read that as the previous owner, not a previous owner, so I. I was under the assumption that the premise of that was to prohibit. Uh and as as a real estate investor, I'll say this, you know, shenanigans between, you know, like, all right, well, I own this property. And they'll do one thing to it and then they'll uh you know, sell the LLC to another company and that company does something different. So I thought it was more of a a provision to protect against kind of a buddy buddy shared trickery. To get around certain city ordinance, is that incorrect? Because that's how I've kind of been perceiving this, I didn't realize that the chain of events went back beyond that previous owner.
And in fact, misread it and Mr. Eisenbacher is right, it says A, it's the owner, a previous.
I didn't realize that, so yeah, that's I just learned something there, I've I've always interpreted as. As the guy right before the guy who's got it now to kind of eliminate anybody doing anything weird that way, you know.
Right, it does say a previous owners, what our ordinance does say.
I must have just bent in my head then, I just I I misread that, thank you for that clarification, I didn't realize that.
So personally, when I read the legalese, we can't approve any variances ever because. The legalese are any previous owner that created it and. For any personal reason.
I wouldn't agree with that necessarily.
I know, I know, but that's where that's where we spend hours and hours arguing and spending so much time or not arguing, discussing the merits of the case. And having struggling with a lot of these issues is it's very fuzzy on those two points.
Yeah, well, and that's the the. As the board, you have the authority to interpret the ordinance the way you you think it should be interpreted, so that might be a way of getting around that. Um like Mr. Desmond said, it's his belief that that was maybe to prevent shenanigans between the previous owner and the present owner. Uh that's if you could justify. In your granting of the variance that that's your understanding, that would probably be uh valid.
Thank you, that's all my questions.
Mr. Chairman Boswell.
I guess to piggyback on that, one of the things that I've understood it to mean is. Um you know, it's really something with the property. That in in, you know, with somewhat of an emphasis, I know that all five have to have some evidence to it, but really. You know, what is something unique about the property itself? Um that, you know, regardless of whether person A or person B owns the property. That issue runs with the land and, you know, needs to be addressed and um. And I think that's some of what we run up against when we talk about some of these subdivisions that are, you know, the parcels all look very, very similar. Uh and don't necessarily have um. Um you know, any really, at least from a property standpoint, don't seem to have a lot of distinguishing characteristics, that's at least how I've. Interpreted some of those um requirements, I don't know if that if that's resonating with the. The guidance that that you're talking about, uh Mr. Matzny, but.
Right, the the variance ultimately has to be based on the characteristic of the property itself and that's. You know, that's that's the number one standard, uh the exceptional characteristics have to be based on the property itself. I mean, if there's wetlands in the property, certainly that's not the previous owner's fault. If uh but on the other hand, if it's a if it's a an L-shaped lot. You know, that was created by, as Mr. Eisenbacher pointed out, by somebody a long time ago. But uh you know, I guess it you have to use sometimes your own reasonableness. Uh and base it on a case by case basis.
Anyone else? I would just say, I guess on the last um. Your information on the Open Meetings Act and um you how the board does have a right to ask. You know, I'm anyone who walks in the door coming in from Toledo, Ohio, you have the right to address the board, I get that, I think that's fine. Um but the board does have the right to ask the resident or the person coming in the door to the microphone. During public comment what their address is, so then I I think that's a good way to determine. If that person really has um skin in the game, if you will, that they live in Troy. And um that's really, I think, because we represent the citizens of Troy, I think that's really, really critical and I. Just I don't want to get into it too detailed because of um legal issues. But there was a group that was before this board two separate times and the particular group turned out. God's green acre of people um to come and address the board about why we should approve the variance. Uh variances, many variances and uh they um. Brought in people from the few that mentioned where they were from um tended to be from like Lansing. Well, you know, my opinion about in that regard is I really don't care so much about what people from Lansing's think about. This regarding this particular community, even though I'm sure people from Lansing are very nice people. So um I if I had to do it over again, for those meetings, I probably would have asked for people that. Will reside in Troy, if you have a packed house, A, those people who reside in Troy, please come forward when you know that there's. A bazillion people who want to come and address the board, uh you know, so we know this group lives there and then. Maybe ask for business owners in Troy then to follow up who don't reside in Troy. And then they can give us their address and you can determine as a board where on the map they're coming from, and then finally. People who are just interested in this issue and then please give us your address, you once again, someone who lives in Grand Rapids, their opinion. It they have a right to their opinion, but they certainly would not weigh. Uh anything on me regarding their perspective, um because they don't have um connection to this particular community. So that's just a quick thought, anyone else, and then we will close this portion out, it is getting late, but Mr. Matzny, this has been excellent, very well done. So I really like the fact that you you have it not just as verbal, but. Uh electronically and obviously if a board member wants to go over it again, you know, later date. That's clearly available to them, so that's really good, so well done to you on that.
Thank you.
Anything, uh Mr. Evans?
I had a question for Mr. Matson.
Yes.
Um we talked, Alan, you talked a little bit uh about evidence on record. In the instance that something does go and is appealed to Circuit Court or decisions appealed to Circuit Court, um does the record also include the video? Or does it does it have to be exclusively the minutes?
My opinion, it does include the video, in fact, on the. Uh the appeal that I'm arguing tomorrow, as a matter of fact, on the the deck issue and the cluster option. We, the video is supplied by the the municipality, the the statute says it's by the clerk, but usually it's our office. And then we have the clerk send it, uh we always include the video and one of the reasons we include the video is because. Uh unless you pay to have the meeting transcribed, which we've done before. You 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 provide the court with the video and then you watch it, then you point out portions of the video to the judge showing why. The denial or the granting is supported by, you know, having the record and and we've and I did that in this case, I said, you know. This Mr. McCully pointed this out or Mr. Eisenbacher pointed this out and that's all in our brief and that's all in our argument. Uh because the minutes themselves don't tell us a lot, under the Open Meetings Act. The minutes don't have to have any details other than uh who voted and what the vote was, and so if you only provide the court with the minutes. The court might just act might order you to get a transcript, it's what they might do, and then we got to pay to do that, and we've done that before. This case, we provided the court with the video and they haven't asked for a transcript and but. I watched the video of our that meeting and pointed out aspects of it and our argument to support. This board's decision was based uh on on evidence and based on the ordinance and and what have you, so. So I, yeah, the video should be included or you should pay uh someone to transcribe the proceedings. Which usually costs a lot of money because it's difficult for a court reporter to to transcribe when a lot of people are talking, so. But it's been done before.
Yes, that furthers our our interest in uh making sure that we have a full discussion related to our criteria, so uh. Because everything we say and do is going to be part of the record, even though it's not in the minutes. Thank you.
Very good, we're going to move right along, excuse me, to uh item num- new item eight, which is the election of officers. I just want to address my colleagues on the board uh on this matter. As we are about to um elect a chairman and a vice chairman, uh the Troy City Council chose not to reappoint me to this board. And so this is my final meeting and it has been a absolute pleasure. Uh to serve with many of you for a number of you for uh years. Uh and a good number of you for less than that amount of time, but it's been um a tremen- tremendous experience being on this board. I was asked to be on this board uh or to be considered by council too many years ago, I don't think I had any gray hair back then, so. And um so it's been just a uh wonderful experience overall and uh I've learned, I've met a. Uh tremendous number of people in the community, business people with uh connections to this community. Uh so it just, you know, we live in a very vibrant, uh you know, community that has a lot to offer for many different people, I don't want to. Uh go, you know, too far much further on on my thoughts on the city, but you know, it's just been, I've been very humbled, I I do want to say. Couple of quick things, first of all, um you know, during my ten years chairman, which has been. Most of the time I've been on the board, I've been chairman, I was vice chairman, I was a a member and not an officer. But uh after a number of years, I became chairman, you know, pretty much nonstop with a couple rotations off. And uh the support I've received from various city staff members uh during all these years has been. Excellent and uh they're uh reachable by phone and email. Uh their insight has been very helpful, uh I just learned in the recent go around with these. Two fine gentlemen, Mr. Evans and Mr. Matzny, you know, that if I, because of my experience, if I know that there's going to be an issue. Uh ahead of time, I will contact them and I will speak with them one on one and. One case uh a number of months ago, the three of us had a three-way call, very helpful. Because I was prepared to 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 lead the meeting and um they've been very uh extremely helpful. Uh they have the best interest of the city at heart and the uh the the citizens of Troy at heart, and I really appreciate that, and Miss. Ferenc has been uh awesome since since she's joined us as well, so thank you uh to uh you folks, uh you lady and gentleman. Uh have been and have meant a lot to me personally, I will want to just uh do a quick shout out, when I joined the board. I think if I'm not wrong, I was asked by a member of council just this a couple of weeks ago. Um how, you know, when did you join, I think it's seventeen years, but I could be wrong on that. By a member of council just, this a couple of weeks ago, um, how, you know, when did you join, I think it's seventeen years, but I could be wrong on that, so, um, but, uh. Uh, you know, I remember those early days, and Mr. Kent Courtney, the former longtime city clerk of the city of Troy, who retired from being clerk and was recruited by somebody, hoodwinked by somebody. Into serving on this board, and he was really the, uh, uh, the lion of the senate, if you will, of this board, and, um. He told me after I, he really mentored me in a significant way, and, uh, he was a phenomenal public servant, and, um, I remember, I think. Six months into my service was the, uh, election of officers, he's like, you are gonna be vice chairman, I'm like, what? I'm still trying to figure out where the bathrooms are, you know, and, uh, surely they're. I wish him the best, and, uh. Um, I also just wanna mention, uh, whoever's elected chairman next, uh, fellow members, have your chairman's, you know, uh, follow your chairman's lead. The chairman wants to have everybody heard, no matter who the chairman is, in an orderly fashion, and the best way, here it is, after ten thirty, ten forty. And we only had two action items to consider, it's late night, and if, you know, the chairman's trying to make sure that the trains are running on the right track, they're not gonna collide, they're gonna take off on time. And if various people wanna be recognized, or to speak without being recognized, it just means it's a stopping action over and over again, which means it just elongates the meeting. And it makes it unprofessional for everyone, and once again, uh, the chairman will ensure everybody's right to be heard, which is really important, I think. And that, just side note, the, uh, everyone's, you don't know until you cast your vote, who's in the minority, who's the majority, it doesn't matter, everyone should have the right to be heard. Within incredible reason and rationale, and so that's really important, and then finally, I think that's the final point, um. You know, I mentioned this earlier, we don't represent the city of Troy at these proceedings, we represent the citizens of Troy, the general public. So never feel like you're in a place where you have to protect what the city administration decided, or an, any staff member decided, that's not in our purview, that is for this board. It's our job, it's to re, to represent those people who really feel in many time, at many times, uh, that they're not heard, and that's. The, the re, the reason and rationale that you're public officials in the first place. So without having said a, any more on that, and I would say, after serving on this board for many years, there is no gold watch on the exit door that I'm about to take here in a minute, that's fine. But I think, Miss Friends, you left this pen for me to sign those documents, and this is from, it's a gold pen, and this is from the Michigan Association of Code Enforcement Officers. And I love this pen, because it has a swishy, so you can use it as a pointer or a pink pen, and it has this fancy light on the end, so I'm gonna take this with me as my gold watch.
So, Mr. Clark, that actually really does belong to me personally.
Oh, does it?
So I can gift it to you.
Wonderful, okay, well, you just made my night, cause I just basically told you I was gonna take it anyway.
Glad, I'm glad I could.
I don't wanna commit any crimes on this public, uh, during this public meeting, but thank you very much for that.
Yes.
So I will have this as a memory of my service, and you will, and, uh, mostly Miss Friends, um, at this point in time, so thank you, uh, uh, folks, and, uh. I don't want people to go on about anything, and I don't want, certainly not any questions about why council acted the way they did, that's not, uh, for me to answer. Um, but thank you, thank you, from the bottom of my heart, thank you, it really has been a pleasure, when I see you around the city, and you will, cause I'm not going anywhere, um, and. Jackie, I'll stop in and say hi, uh, whenever I'm in, uh, City Hall for sure, and Paul, uh, you know, at a certain date in the future, when things can happen like that again, like they used to happen. Um, it'll be nice to see your smiling faces, so, uh, with, with that, we are going to move into the election of officers, um, I wanna recognize myself, normally, kind of a rule that, uh. My rule, it's unstated, Roberts kind of addresses it, it's really the chairman's discretion, but, uh, my suggestion to the next chairman, whoever that is going, whomever that's going to be. Is let the board members speak first, go all the way around, and then if you do wanna comment, um, then comment, uh, and generally speaking, I'd like to try and become and free. And then lastly, um, I think that the chairman, uh, Roberts kind of addresses this, and some of the parliamentary classes I've taken, chairman really should not be the author of motions. You have the right as a full member, but let somebody else take that, uh, piece of the road, and I think it just keeps the presiding officer in a proper position to preside. And, um, and, and make sure a very professional meeting happens, that everybody can be heard, so, without any further ado, my motion is, uh, and I've spoken to these two gentlemen already. And so I'm not speaking out of turn as far as, uh, the lack of their approval for what I'm, uh, suggesting to the board, but I move. That, uh, the chairman to be elected tonight would be Michael Bosnbrook, and the vice chairman would be David Eisenbacher, and.
Is everybody frozen? Okay, it's just me.
No, I don't know, it doesn't matter who the next new four members are gonna be, they're gonna serve every. But incredibly well, motion is or second?
I, second.
There's a second, Mr. Desmond seconds, and, uh, under discussion, I'm just gonna throw it out there that, once again, there is the right to bifurcate these offices that a member has. So if somebody wants to, you don't have to move to nominate somebody, uh, for both, or two people for both, to consider two other individuals. Or two individuals in a rotated basis from what I just nominated, uh, then Mr. Desmond seconded, um, you can just simply nominate a single individual for one of those two spots. And that essentially bifurcates, uh, the offices to be elected, namely, if there's a one-person nomination, and it's properly seconded, that becomes the main motion. And then the first one, which I have just made with Mr. Desmond's support, uh, basically goes on the side, so if that makes any sense. So I will call now for any motion that would be, in my opinion, a competing motion, uh, that would be, uh, for two other individuals. Uh, to be for chairman and vice chairman, or if there's a single nomination, or one person for either of those offices. Would anyone like to be recognized? Okay, then I'll open it up for discussion, and this is what I'd like, I, uh, I'd like to hear maybe a couple of very positive comments about these two gentlemen that have just been nominated. And we'll keep it short, cause it's late, but, uh, let's, let, let's, uh, focus on the future, and let's focus on these two fine people, anyone?
I'll dip in.
Mr. Desmond?
Well, I've, uh, I've been on the board for, I don't even know how many years now, it's gotta be six, seven, something like that, but, um, I've watched, I, I. Eisenbacher has always been, uh, a, a really solid voice of reason, pops in with a lot of really good information, uh, nearly every vote, he, he looks at things from every side. Uh, and I've, I've, I've changed my opinions multiple times based on things he's presented, so, uh, I consider him a very strong candidate, I know he's got a lot of other experience in the city. He's, he's been involved in other boards as well, I think he was on council, uh, before my time, um, and then Mr. Bosnbrook, he, he is very, very focused on. What our actual core premise is, and he keeps returning back to that, and every time he makes a motion or, or has a comment, it returns to our, our very base premise, which I think is a very solid thing, and to have both of them working together. I, I just think it's a, it's a good combination, because sometimes they're in opposition to each other, a lot of times they're together with each other, but, uh, they, they come at things from different perspectives, and I appreciate them both, so I think they're very solid candidates, so that's why.
Anyone else? Mr. Green?
Um, I will basically reiterate a lot of what Mr. Desmond said, except I've been here a lot less time, um, both Mr. Bosnbrook and Mr. Eisenbacher have, uh. Have very analytical minds, uh, and are both very focused on what our actual premise is, and, and also. The, the very technical and very critical details that we sometimes drift away from, um, and need to focus on in order to keep it from being personal. A- and so I think that, that, uh, these two are, are excellent choices for the nominated positions.
Absolutely, anyone else? Well, before we have the vote, I'm just gonna say, you are all about to be in very good hands with these two gentlemen, so, um, Miss Friends, please the vote, thank you.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Desmond?
Yes.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Mr. McCauley?
Yes.
Mr. Ramon?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Bosnbrook?
Yes.
Very good, congratulations, gentlemen, you are in, the old saying is Flynn, in like Flynn, but apparently that's offensive these days, so I shouldn't have said that, but I did, cause I'm leaving, so, um. So I'm just gonna, uh, we, you know, from some of us, Mr. Eisenbacher has been around for a long time being on council, uh, we know him very well, but, uh, let's, uh, um. Call on both of these, uh, gentlemen, if they have a few words, and, um, once again, I'm very proud of both of you, so, um, you're gonna do an absolute fantastic job, go ahead. Mr. Vice Chairman, Chairman-elect.
Me, or, or Mr. Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Okay, well, okay, so, uh, very, thank you very much for the, uh, kind, uh, comments from everyone, I appreciate all my colleagues here. In the relatively shorter amount of time that I've been a member of the board, but I think everyone here is, um, collegial and, and similarly-minded, wanting to serve the residents of Troy, I think we. We, uh, do that in our, each of our own ways, and, um, uh, Mr. Chairman, thank you for all your hard work and diligence, uh, this whole time. Leaving some, uh, big shoes to be filled, but, uh, I look forward to stepping into them, and, uh, thank you very much for all that you've done, and look forward to working along with, uh, Mr. Eisenbacher, so, again, thanks for everything, and. Look forward to our next meeting in June.
Thank you, congratulations, Vice Chairman-elect Eisenbacher.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, ever since I've been on the board, you've been on the board along with me, Phil. You were the senior member, um, I guess I'm now stepping into the senior member role, um, it's been enjoyable, we haven't. There's many, many times we haven't agreed, many times we have agreed, um, and I did definitely enjoy working with you, um, I'm working through a lot of the issues that come before us. And I hope that, uh, you find something excellent to fill your, uh, Tuesday evening one, Tuesday evenings once a month.
Excellent, thank you very much, thank you, everyone, Miss Friends, thank you very much again, and, uh, we are adjourned, everyone have a wonderful night, and, oh, Mr. Evans, I'm sorry.
Just have, uh, one opportunity for public comment?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yep.
Here I am forgetting, yes, we did add on item number ten, and, um, that is, no, I'm sorry, item number nine becomes public comment. So if there's any public members of the public that like to be addressed, or would like to address the board, excuse me, um, I see Fred is still listed in queue. So, um, I will open up the public hearing, which is public comment, and if you'd like to be recognized, please do so at this time. Second call for public comment on any matter. Please be recognized at this time, I don't see any flag going up with guarding Fred, and it doesn't look like there's anyone else, so I will close that portion out, so that. Uh, is the end of item number nine, and item number ten is adjourned, have a good one, everyone.
Yeah.
See you soon.
Thank you, Glenn.